Time is 6:31. Go ahead and start the city council meeting, January 28th, 2025. We have a full council minus the mayor. He had personal issues to take care of. Someone make a motion to excuse?
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Allen.
I'll second.
Start with Joe.
Is it gonna work? Waiting on technology.
Passed all, by seven, by six. Now we'll go to number three, the invocation by Councilman Mahoney.
Please, if you wish, bow with me. Heavenly Father, thank you for letting us have this meeting tonight, and thank you for all your blessings and protections on our community and on our country. Help us to use wisdom tonight and do things in accordance with your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna have proclamation for designating February 1 as Delta Sigma Theta Founder's Day Celebration. Councilman Mahoney.
Okay, a proclamation designating February 1, 2025, as Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Founder's Day Celebration. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on January 13 of 1913 by 22 undergraduate African-American women at Howard University who wanted to use their collective strength to promote academic excellence and provide assistance to persons in need. And whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is a private nonprofit organization whose purpose is to provide assistance and support in local communities through established programs, and whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, a sisterhood of predominantly black college-educated women committed to public service with a focus on the black community, continues to make significant efforts to confront the challenges of African-Americans and hence all Americans. And whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has clearly distinguished itself as a reputable international public service organization with a critical focus on programs addressing education, health, international development, and strengthening the community and family. And whereas the Bear County Alumni of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated proudly serves and supports the cities, towns, and municipalities located in the Bear, Comal, and Guadalupe Counties excluding San Antonio area, which includes Cibolo, Converse, Garden Ridge, Helotus, Kirby, Live Oak, Shirts, Selma, Universal City, Windcrest, and other cities located outside San Antonio city limits. Whereas the Bear Area Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated will host their Founder's Day Celebration from Saturday, February 1, 2025, in Live Oak, Texas, and bring hundreds of sisters and community residents together. And whereas it is a great privilege for the city of Cibolo to celebrate the histories, contributions, and legacies of 22 young women and honor the founders of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And now therefore I, Mark Allen, Mayor of Cibolo, Texas, do hereby proclaim February 1, 2025, as Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, as their Founder's Day Celebration Weekend, and encourage all residents to join the sisters of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority in the commemoration and celebration of this weekend, which is dedicated to sisterhood, public service, community, and civic engagement. In witness thereof, signed on the 28th of January, I'm Mayor Mark Allen.
Thank you. Can you all hear me? I hate to have my back turned. My name is Dr. Vanessa Nason, and I am the Chapter President of the Bear Area Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And on behalf of our chapter, we just would like to thank you all for this proclamation, recognizing February 1, 2025, as our celebration, our sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. We have been established for 112 years. We have over 1,000 chapters throughout the continental United States in Oconus. So this is a huge event for us that we celebrate each year, and we're so glad that we are doing it here in Bear County. And we look forward to continuing to work in the city of Cibolo. We do the Give Back at Harman's, we do voter registration drives, we do a number of things. So again, on behalf of some of our members, we thank you all again for this proclamation.
Can we take a picture?
Please, can you please?
All right. Have you want us to stand?
Can we stand in front of the photo?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next proclamation will be for the 76th Annual San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo. Councilman McLaughlin.
Proclamation by the mayor of the city of Cibolo, designating February 6, 2025, as the kickoff of official rodeo season and official Dress Western Day. Whereas the 76th Annual San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo, one of the largest and most prestigious events in the Alamo City, will be held February 6 through 23rd, 2025, at the Freeman Coliseum. And whereas the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo is a volunteer organization that emphasizes agriculture and education to develop the youth of Texas. And whereas since inception, over $267 million have been committed by the organization to the youth of Texas in the form of scholarships, grants, endowments, auctions, calf scramble program, and show premiums, with $12 million committed in 2024 impacting 18,000 students. And whereas the lifeblood of the organization is the over 7,000 volunteers, the corporate partners, and patrons who support the event and mission. And whereas in 2024, over 1.5 million visitors enjoyed exciting activities such as world-class entertainment, the carnival, educational exhibits, family activities and attractions, livestock and horse shows, and sales, mutton busting, calf scramble, extreme bowls, and shopping for the entire family do enjoy. And whereas on February 6, 2025, the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo will kick off with its livestock show to support its mission of educating future generations. Now I, Mark Allen, Mayor of Cibolo, on behalf of staff and all citizens, do hereby proclaim February 6, 2025, to be the kickoff of official rodeo season, as well as official Dress Western Day in the city of Cibolo. Invite all our citizens to celebrate and support the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo this season.
Well, I pressed it. Okay, it's green. We are the Ambassador Committee from the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo. Thank you for the opportunity for us to come here this evening. We have been very busy this year, visiting 4H and FFA groups, youth shows, parades. You probably have seen our entry in the Shirts Fourth of July Parade and Shirts Christmas Last week, this committee attended Guadalupe County Youth Livestock and Homemakers Show and Auction. We sponsored the buckle for the Lamb Division Grand Champion. We visited with many students from Clemmons FFA and 4H, and Steel FFA and 4H, and encouraged them to apply for a scholarship from SAIL. This year, we have $12 million for scholarships. When visiting with young people... When visiting with these young people, we find they are all dedicated to their club, their project, their family, sports, church, and other community activities. We encourage them to apply for a SAIL scholarship because they all deserve the honor. Thank you very much.
All right, citizens to be heard. This is only time during the council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is an opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster. Prior to the start of the meeting, the city council may not deliberate on any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present any factual response to items brought up by the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council, so long as the councils are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to any member or attendee, including city staff. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person shall be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of viewpoints expressed. This meeting is livestreamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the city of Cibolo or on an agenda item and have this item read at this meeting, please email citiesecretary@ciblotx.gov or phone 210-566-6111 before 5:00 p.m. the date of the meeting. First one, Debbie Cuera?
Good evening, council. My name is... Brooks' mom, your current Ms. Cibolo. I want to first thank you for supporting the Ms. Cibolo Pageant last year and providing a grant that provided scholarships to several of our high school young ladies. I hope you've seen our daughters on the court throughout this year within the community, where we have looked for ways for the girls to represent their city well. Last year before the pageant, we were told that the Ms. Cibolo Pageant was looking for the girl next door. With wholesome and pure values, for young ladies who are looking to be leaders and positive representatives, I believe these girls, some that are attending tonight and some that are not here tonight, ranging from ages of 3 to 18, are the girls next door. We have athletes and dancers, honor roll students, and girls who are just wanting to mentor and be mentored with what this pageant offers this town and our youth. There are not a lot of youth today who want to give back and become part of their community, to be outwardly focused instead of inwardly focused. I believe the Ms. Cibolo Pageant offers these girls that opportunity, but it does not come without a cost. As a board member this year of the Ms. Cibolo Pageant, I have seen behind-the-scenes budgets that reflect how expensive things are and can be, and I'm sure you're well aware of that as you're running our city and the finances that come with doing that. Tonight, we're announcing our 2025 pageant date, and we're hopeful that as our city council, you will see the importance of pouring back into our youth and these young ladies. This organization is part of Cibolo, and the recipients of your funding for any grants in the future are all girls who live in your community here in Cibolo. Thank you again for the opportunity that you have provided Brooke and the other girls and participants, and the scholarship that she received. Please remember this last year and the times that you've seen these girls in the community at ribbon cuttings and parades, at veterans memorial events, at tree lighting ceremonies, in parks, and at festivals. My hope is that you'll remember these things when looking at opportunities to pour back into our youth. I appreciate each of you, the time that you serve for our community. I thank you. God bless you.
Ms. Cibolo, and I'm here with little Ms. Cibolo, Eliana, and Ms. Freedom, Christina. The Ms. Cibolo Pageant has broken my stereotype of what a pageant looks like. Initially, the Ms. Cibolo Pageant was something that my mom talked me into. I was worried about not looking like or being the girl they needed. My expectations were perfect body, perfect smile, and something that no girl could ever really be. But this pageant is about being a community leader. As Ms. Cibolo, you get the opportunity to serve your community, represent your city, and strive to uphold its values. Little girls look up to you, adults have expectations for you, and you get the opportunity to represent the youth of your community. Ms. Cibolo isn't just a girl with a pretty face, but a girl meant to embody a leader, and it is attainable for any girl if they put forth the effort. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to be introduced to this organization by funding the pageant last year. It has truly changed my life and my perspective. These attributes of the program are something I think we can all agree are important for the youth of our community, and that is why we need funding for the upcoming Ms. Cibolo Pageant taking place May 18. Your money doesn't just go towards putting the pageant together, but also for the scholarships given to the Ms. Cibolo Court. As a freshman, I have $6,500 worth of scholarship money, partially thanks to the Ms. Cibolo Pageant. It is important that we keep this opportunity available for girls that come after me. Thank you for your time, and I hope you remember what I've said today when considering funding the Ms. Cibolo Pageant.
This is a bit out of pocket. I didn't really prepare anything, but I did want to let you all know, this is a very good opportunity for women to communicate and connect with each other and make a lot of new friends and have unique opportunities to create scholarship money like Brooke said. And I do believe this is a very good program. We should continue every year in the future if we can. So thank you all for listening. Thank you for Brooke, and thank you for all of this.
Okay. Now Vanessa Nason, is that still on that group? Okay. Ivory Grant? Jennifer Beckman?
Thank you. Good evening, council. We would like to first just thank you for hearing us this evening, and we're here tonight with several families from our neighborhood in support of Item 10B. Item 10B, which is to approve the repeal and replace of Cibolo Code of Ordinance, Chapter 14, Article 4, in regards to the substandard building conditions. We have several families here with us tonight that have been impacted by the conditions of this home and the occupants within. We would just like to show our support. We had half dozen families that would have loved to attend tonight and could not make it, but this has become a really critical issue for the neighborhood. We would very much like to thank the council, but additionally thank the first responders, our police officers, firemen, animal control, judges, that have been in support of us with this issue for the past three years. Thank you, and we look forward to it.
Hello, city council. My name is Diana Weimer, and I am your commissioner for P&amp;Z Place One. And the reason I'm here is the property that's coming up for a replat is part of a larger piece of property, and that's where I cut my teeth on zoning. I learned a lot about zoning on this property. And I want to bring to your attention a couple of things, because it was not in your packet. And one of them is that this property is under a cup, a conditional use permit. And it does section out the section that's not under the cup, and my concern is that you make sure that this area is accurate on the plat, as well as in the ordinance, 1346, which was adopted on August 24, 2021. And it's very difficult. I looked over the plat to the best I can tell, because the numbers are difficult to read on the online version of the ordinance, is that it does fall within there, but I just think that for full disclosure, that planning and zoning, which was not provided this information either, I was not at the meeting, I was not able to address it at that time. But I think full disclosure is you should understand that there is a conditional use permit on this property, and make sure that everything falls in line to that, and we would have caught it if they had told us then. So in your packet, it probably told you that the P&amp;Z denied this, but they didn't deny it based upon this. They denied it because there was outstanding documentation that the planning department was requiring, and that's the reason it was declined. But I just ask, again, that you just really ask the planning department to make sure that all the numbers that go on the perimeter of the property match the numbers that go on the perimeter of the ordinance that has a conditional use permit. My experience on P&amp;Z has been very good. I'm learning a lot. I hope I'm adding a lot, and I really enjoy working with the individuals because they answer our questions immediately. So I do not want you to think that this is hostile. This is not hostile, and this is just making sure we have all the information. Okay? Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members. I am on the next agenda on next February 11 meeting. I came by to introduce myself. I know we have some new faces on the council. Congratulations. We've also had some changeover in the staff as well, in the planning staff. Both the previous staff and the existing, Aaron Spencer's been fantastic to work with. Everyone's been very professional. And there's been some very exciting developments since I came before you last. Again, my partners and I have the 14.7 acres under contract on Old Wiederstein behind the future Quick Trips, the hard corner. And since the time I met with you, we've got an additional letter support from all surrounding neighbors, including the Quick Trips, who's excited, and they understand the difficulty of connecting to the curb cut that they will be putting in our shared driveway. And they also welcome the business activity that's planned for the entire 14 acres. If you look at the proposed plan, it was designed based on the economic report and the recommendations that the city ordered regarding potential restaurants, retail, medical office in particular. Additionally, we have a letter of support from the rear neighbor who owns the 19 acres, and since he learned about the project, he's very excited. He learned that he needs a secondary emergency access point. He only has one off of FM 1103, and the new code requirement is for two access points. We have voluntarily gotten with the fire marshal, who's made a recommendation that these properties collaborate, and we will extend the emergency access all the way to the rear of the property to provide emergency access to that 19 acres, so it too can be developed. In the fire marshal, you have a letter in your package. Being respectful of your time, we also have a signed and sealed letter from the civil engineer that explains the difficult topography and his experience on why it's appropriate for a conditional use permit in this location. Additionally, a signed and sealed letter from the architect, who's designed over 200-plus projects, and explains how self-storage these days is used as a buffer against intense uses like the gas station and other softer retail uses, restaurants, medical office, et cetera. Finally, there's a letter of support from our capital partner, which is the founder of Best Buy, Mr. Richard Salz and his family office, and they're behind the entire project. They're excited to invest in the city of Cibolo. And so I encourage you, I emailed the package to all of you today. I'm sorry the mayor's not here. I'm here to earn every one of your member's support, as well as the mayor's endorsement for this exciting project that's going to be great for the city of Cibolo. I ask you, please, there's a memo that will guide you through the presentation, and if at all possible, go park at the CVS across the street and look at the property, and you'll see why this aspect is an essential part of the overall plan. Look forward to seeing you next meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to just, sorry. So I noticed that there were several, at least, sorry. So I noticed that one of the items on the agenda was regarding the establishment of a Little League, and that is something that the city council should approve, as there is a lack of, you know, things for young people to do, and an establishment of a Little League would help alleviate some of the issues where children just don't have anything to do. That will be all. That will be all.
Says, "Hello, my family lives in Saratoga, and we would like to raise a concern for the proposal to install barriers in front of Flawther Intermediate School. We live at the very front of Saratoga, and in previous years, when these barriers were up, it caused people to do unsafe, illegal U-turns further down the road on Green Valley, or they would come into our cul-de-sac and do a U-turn there. My children play in front of our house, and the cones would cause constant unnecessary traffic in our cul-de-sac.
I would like to pull 7A, please.
7A, all right. Any others?
No. I'd like to make a motion to approve the rest, B through F.
All right. Second, now have a second. 6-1. Okay. All right.
I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on 7A, if you wouldn't mind regarding the minutes.
Absolutely.
That way we can go on and approve it. Item 12D doesn't have entirely accurate information. I was just wondering if we can go ahead and leave the minutes. They needed to be corrected. The minutes state that I made the motion to approve a Capitol Improvement Advisory Committee and requirements, where exactly I made a motion to retain the committee we currently have and keep it separate from planning and zoning, and I just wanted that to reflect correctly in the minutes. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Can I?
Do you?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
One more comment. If I can suggest another edit, maybe it's a separate motion. Do you want to? Let me just speak to this. Way up on page 2, let's see. Well, it's in the mentions of the two. Here we go. Item 7, no, I'm sorry. Where we mentioned some recognition for the party of council members. Here it is, item 5. How y'all feel? I wish it would simply acknowledge that Mr. Benson was not able to be here, but it seems that that's not even mentioned. Just for the record, it should be on there to say he didn't make it. He could not be here that night.
I couldn't add it in there. Usually I would only put it in if somebody may have said something about it, so whatever is normal, I would put it in there, but I can always add that.
Okay.
It's not a problem.
I think that'd be a great idea.
I can put that in there.
Yeah, because I wanted to speak. He had sent a letter in that night, and everything got rushed, and I got overlooked. So, he did want to speak on that because he wasn't able to make it. Thank you.
One more final edit. I went ahead and turned the page. On item 11L, right there, on 12L, also to include, I made a motion to discuss the sitting at the DIAS and discuss that interview committee for all committees. And then I also mentioned for the discussion for the intersection for Cibolo Valley Drive and Everyday Way. Just to place on record. Thank you.
All right. Make a, is that all?
Yes.
You want to make a motion to approve?
Absolutely. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve 7A with corrections.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, with Councilman Mahoney. All right. 7O, motion pass. All right. Number eight, staff update.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Let me run through these updates, and then I will email this to you for your record. On the Capitol Improvement Projects, here are some updates, and these will be highlighted and read when I send them to you. On the Lower Seguin Road, the final lift of asphalt was completed on January 17th, about 11 days ago. Striping will be placed the week of February 3rd. Dean Road and Bolton Road, no new update, but we are expecting staff to come before council to address the repairs that need to be made based upon some of the shifting of the roads, so we will be bringing that to you in February. Green Valley Road, the low-water crossing improvements, final lift of asphalt was placed on January 16th. Striping will be placed the week of February 3rd, same week as Lower Seguin Road. Final walkthrough scheduled after the striping is down in February. On the Animal Care Facility, the concrete slab for the portable kennels has been completed. The kennels will be delivered the week of February 3rd, so next week. The parking lot demo of the old parking lot will begin February 3rd, and the new parking lot will begin. And then, I'm overlooking the office structure. We are waiting just for the stairs to the portable office structure, and then it can be fully used, but we've had time for furniture to be moved in, for the staff to be able to move into that structure. So, that's the update on the Animal Care Facility at our existing location. Deer Creek Drainage Improvements, the project began January 23rd. The project is expected to be completed by early summer. Town Creek Trail Project, you'll remember that you approved the advanced funding agreement with TechDOT on December 10th. The project surveying since then has begun to inform the design of the trail. City staff, our city engineering firm, Colliers, and TechDOT, along with the AAMPO, are holding milestone meetings as we progress on this project. And the project is scheduled to be lit, scheduled for FY '27, so we'll be working for this year on the design, and then we'll lit the project as soon as possible. Trailhead Parking Lot, this is the Trailhead Parking Lot for the Town Creek Regional Trail. This is at FM 1103 and the entry into HEB. Project to begin early February, and the project is expected to be completed by early summer. On our FY '25 Street Rehabilitation Package Number One, that's Deer Creek Boulevard, Green Valley Road 1, Green Valley Road 2. This item is on the February 11th, 2025 City Council Agenda for an award of contract. Remember, we'll have Package Two following in the next couple of months, based upon Silverwing, Firebird Run, and Town Creek designs being lit, bid, and then bringing forward that award of contract. On Tolly Road, no new update. We do have an executive session on that project. I will, in my update, give you an update on the know-through truck signs that have been installed. The only one that we're still waiting on is Dean Road. That one is being fabricated. On the Solid Waste Franchise RFP, we remain on schedule to issue the RFP by February 19th. That's as we discussed with council at the last meeting. And then, we do have new council member orientation, February 3rd. The entire council is invited to attend, so we will, through the City Secretary's Office, extend that appointment if it's not been sent to all of you. It's not mandatory for those of you who have been on council for a while, but if you want to attend, you are welcome to be there. And then, also, the Strategic Management Workshop. What I'd like to do is recommend to the council some dates. I'll want to offer you a couple of dates during the week, but also a Saturday. So, the city council meetings in March, and we're looking at March, are March 11th and March 25th. Spring Break, which we made a commitment not to schedule our Strategic Management Workshop during, is March 17th through the 21st. That's the Monday through Friday. March Madness is the week of 16th through April 7th. We're not going to be able to avoid conflicting with March Madness, but I just had to bring it up. CMO's recommendation would be the following dates: Thursday, March 27th, Friday, March 28th, Saturday, March 29th. We'll have to offer some alternatives, but those are the dates I'd like to start with. And so, we've held our Strategic Management Workshops on Saturdays in the past, so I'm assuming Saturday will be the preference, since many of you do have obligations during the week. Yes, sir.
Is that, you finished?
Yes, sir.
I've got a quick question on the Animal Services Facility.
Yes.
Did we pull permits on that?
Yes, we pulled permits.
And do we have a certified electrician that's doing the electrical work?
We do have a certified electrician that is doing the work. I'll look over to Julio Gomez, who is able to answer the question in more detail.
Yes, we have Altermann doing the electrical work, and we did get them.
They're employed here at the city?
No.
Okay.
So, I know the Animal Services Facility, we're finally almost in there. What's caused the delays? Because this has been, I don't know who to ask, and just curious, I've gotten a lot of questions. We had our animal advisory last night, and that was one of the questions that came up, like, why is this, why is the office building specifically still not there or open?
So, we're waiting on the stairs to be delivered. The reason we didn't have the stairs installed yet is because we had to reconstruct the sidewalk through there to get the plumbing through and the electrical and the fiber optic, and we got all that completed, so now they put the slab down. We reached out to JMO, which is the builder, and he's working on us to get those stairs installed.
Okay. It's every week that it's delayed, every day it's delayed. Those workers are working out of very cramped offices and really cramped spaces. We have a high number of animals right now. The weather being how it is, it's just not ideal. And we budgeted for this in July of 2023 for FY '24, and we're now in quarter two of FY ' '25, and it's still not fully used yet. So, I'm glad that we're almost there. Yay! But those delays are a little concerning. And then, my second question, I don't know if it's a question or more of a request, maybe. For TechDOT for Phase One and Phase Two, they did workshops a long time ago, or town halls a long time ago, where they let residents come in and look at the maps. Phase One was like 10 years ago, probably, at this point. Phase Two was maybe four or five years ago. The sound walls have been an ongoing question. I do have the maps from the very first town hall that they had, where they had pictures of the sound walls and everything for Phase One. For Phase Two, the original town hall, they showed sound wall location, and then I think Joel and I, and maybe someone else, got a letter from TechDOT saying that they weren't doing sound walls. There's been a lot of confusion from the community, so if TechDOT would be willing to either speak on that, provide an updated map, or some kind of updated communication on where those sound barriers are going to go on Phase Two. Also, with Phase One, they provided a really great chart during the very first, again, one of the very first town halls, that showed where the stoplights were going to go, which intersections were going to have, what kind of stoplight, stop sign, whatever. And for Phase Two, I have not seen something similar, so when people are asking, "Am I getting a stoplight?", we know about some of them, like the one at Steel Crossing, or Knights Crossing, but we don't know any of the other locations of stoplights or what those intersections will look like. So, if we could get just kind of maybe their most current plans or something that we can put out to kind of answer some of these questions, that would be fantastic.
I can help answer part of that. In talking with TechDOT at the MPO meetings, that is where the stoplights are, other than Knights Crossing, what we have is what we're going to have. They're not going to put, yeah. As far as sound walls, like you and I got that letter, that's been the whole delay of Phase One with sound walls, and they're not in the business of putting up sound walls. They're in the business of putting down roads. So, I don't know if that, but I'm with you. We get TechDOT in here to answer some of these questions.
And I do understand they're not in the business of sound walls, but when they brought it up the first time, it was due to safety and noise concerns with their noise studies. And so, I'm just.
Understood.
I would just like an official response on that. What has changed from that first town hall where they were showing there were going to be sound walls versus now? Because the noise isn't changing, the location of the homes isn't changing, so what's changed to make it so that they're not needed anymore, at least in what I can find? Again, I don't have access to their most updated records. I just have access to what they put on their project website.
So, Ms. Cunningham, to clarify, an update from TechDOT on FM 1103, Phase Two, about A, location of traffic signals, and B, if sound walls are still part of the project or not.
Correct. And then, if they have any updated maps, layouts, or anything, maybe it's a website that I'm just not able to Google and find, but if there's some kind of reference link that we can send out and make available for the public that has more up-to-date data and maps and stuff than from 2017, 2018, that would be fantastic.
One last thing is, one of the holdups right now on Phase Two is our favorite, Union Pacific Railroad. So, they're working with them. I'm working on my side with Union Pacific people I know, but that's one of the holdups are like, "Well, we'd rather have an overpass." Well, that would have been fine had QT not gone in.
It's not really going to fit.
It ain't going to fit now, and that's why I keep explaining them to explain to Union Pacific. So, you'd have to buy out QT, but that's the other thing I have mentioned.
I'll send that request to TechDOT tonight.
Thank you.
And forward it to council when we get the answers. No, sir.
Moving on to number nine, discussion action items. 9A, discussion action regarding the preliminary plat of Venado Crossing Unit 6 subdivision. Mr. Spencer.
So, the owner is HTC Venado Crossing LLC. Representative is Brian Sims of Colliers Engineering and Design. The area is 23.44 acres. This is located south of FM 78, west of the Meadowview Estates. This is current council place four, previous council District 7. It is zone planned unit development, PUD, under ordinance 1118 and amended ordinance 1197. The proposed use is 76 single-family residential lots and three drainage lots. Utility providers are GVSUD for water, City of Cibolo for sewer, and GVEC for electricity. This plat establishes 76 lots that are typically 60 feet in width. As the PUD for Venado Crossing is vested to the 2013 UDC, these lots align with the High Density One Family Residential SF3 zoning district regulations, which are comparable to the SF6 districts in the 2018 UDC. The PUD for Venado Crossing was approved in 2014, and the land study and public improvements agreement were subsequently approved in 2017. This plat contains approximately 3,120 linear feet of roadway to serve the unit within the development. According to the TIA, which is the Traffic Impact Analysis, a traffic light at Duward Overlook and FM 78 shall be installed once 215 lots are occupied. To date, 165 lots have been occupied, so with the approval of Unit 6, it will result in a total of 365 approved and/or recorded lots. On January 24th, just this past Friday, the applicant did submit a revised comment-response letter, and it was included in the letter that the contractor is in the process of scheduling a pre-construction meeting with TechDOT to start construction of the traffic signal, and this is anticipated to occur within the next six months. The site is served by GVSUD. The site is served by GVSUD for water and the City of Siblo for sewer. The drainage plan was reviewed and approved in May of 2020. This plat includes three drainage lots. The subdivision does not require additional parkland dedication under this UDC as the minimum required parkland was dedicated in Unit One. Staff and the city engineer have reviewed the preliminary plat and its associated documents. Since the agenda was published and the applicant did resubmit their revised plat application and documents, those have been reviewed as well. Again, that was just this past Friday. And those, those revised documents did address the outstanding comments that were notated within the comment review letter. So staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat. So staff is available if you have any questions, and I do believe the applicant is here as well.
So I'm a little confused by the statement in here that SF3 is comparable to SF6 in our previous code. Because in our code, it says SF, SF6, SF3 is three lots per acre.
No. That was, what we used to have was SF1, SF2, and SF3. SF3 was a high density, and that's what they're, they're responding to in this. It used to be, just so you know, it used to be, and, and when I was on planning and zoning when this came through, and then I was on council after. And so it was SF3, which was the highest density they could go. And we were asking for more SF2, and they gave us some SF2 and some SF3. So that's where that is. It's, it's compatible to SF6, which is when we change our UDC and we change designations, that's what has happened.
Okay, so what is the minimum front lot line for SF3, 6, whatever this is? Because I see a couple on here that seem very small, like 30 something feet, 40 something feet.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of like what Councilman Hicks was mentioning in terms of them being vested. So they have that public improvement agreement. So with those public improvement agreements, and we'll see this with the number of subdivisions within the City of Siblo, whenever they started the process earlier on, like in this case for Venado Crossing, this was back in the time whenever the 2013 ordinance was, was around. So that's the code that they're vested to.
Okay. What is their PIA for?
The PIA was for the public improvements that they were on, wanting through the subdivision. So I know that one of those were for the connection from FM 78 going down to almost the Risby Road through the subdivision. So there's different improvements, like streets, drainage, water. Sometimes if they're oversizing the utilities, then the city sometimes compensates them so they get credits. So things like that are defined within the PIA, as well as the vesting.
One was also the lift station out there.
Okay.
If we, I don't want to, I don't want to hash that one out again. It's ugly.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Just to be clear, the February 26, 2013 Unified Development Code, which the developer is vested on under chapter 245 of the Local Government Code, states in section 4.5.1 that 4.5.1.3 High Density Family Residential SF3 is a mixed-density residential district, enables a mixed residential density of up to 5.5 units per acre. The district is intended to complement the suburban district and serve as a transitional use. And so that's the definition that you requested.
The, the front lot lines just seem very small on some of those lots.
I'm still waiting for the developer to develop some commercial out there. They kept saying, give us those.
One of the other things I'd like to kind of convey to the developer is, and to all developers in Siblo, really, when they promise amenities, if they could kind of, I don't know if there's something that we can do in our code or what, to encourage them to build the amenities first. I get more calls about amenities and neighborhoods not being built and when they're going to be built and can the city do anything about them than just about, well, and not just about anything else. 1103 is definitely a top spot. But I get a lot of calls and emails about that. Developers just not building it. And I know in the past, there have been neighborhoods where the developer left, just turned over a chunk of money to the HOA and was like, okay, it's your problem, now you can build it. So, well, we don't have any amenities in my neighborhood. So that, if we can convey that, I know that's not directly related to this, but it is sort of, they're adding more homes without building the amenities, and that will become an increasing, an increasingly voiced issue.
Yeah, and I hope as we talk more about planning items, whether it's this item or others, that we can also look in terms of our UDC rewrite that's coming up. So obviously, yes, definitely keep things like this in the back of your mind.
These are things that have to be done at the front end. We're just unfortunate. Unit Six behind, Six behind the.
Well, they, they'd also promised this commercial out there, and that's why, and I haven't seen nothing, nothing.
Nothing. Nope. But as, as far as the staff is concerned, they've satisfied everything for their preliminary plat?
Yes, sir. They have satisfied all engineering, planning, and fire comments that were outstanding.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's another concern of mine, Mr. Roberts, is here it is, we got our packet on Wednesday, and then they go and they finalize it on Friday before we get it. We don't get to see any of that. Not saying I don't trust your word, but here once again.
They go to the line.
This is where we take our policies, toss them out the window because we're not following them.
All right, well, for what's before us, do I have a motion on 9A?
One quick question. When P&amp;Z denied it, they denied it for the same reason that staff recommended denial?
Yes, ma'am, there were outstanding comments at that time.
Okay.
And mayor and council, as a practice, because of the state shot clock, we have always allowed the applicant to provide their information between when the packet goes out and your meeting. And so this is not the first time that an applicant has been able to satisfy outstanding comments between the packet going out and the council meeting. So we've not thrown a policy out, this has been our practice. If not for the state shot clock, we would not have to operate this way. But because of the state shot clock, this is the way in which cities are under the gun to ensure that elected officials and appointed officials can either deny or approve subdivisions rather than allow the shot clock to expire and the city to be forced to approve something that does not meet your subdivision reg. So just for the record, I want to point that out.
Mr. Spencer, did you say the applicant was here?
Yes, sir.
Would you all like to ask him some questions?
Absolutely.
My name is Wayne Flores, I'm with Colliers Engineering, representing the developer on the project. To answer your questions.
So the PIA that Venado Crossing is signed on to, I don't know how else to phrase that. What's the status? Are you all complete on that?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Public infrastructure agreement that you all signed on to comply with, is that complete? Are the terms of the PIA complete? Have you put in the infrastructure that's required of the PIA? Would you know that, or would that be someone else?
Are you talking about the traffic signal? Or are you talking about the amenities? I'm not sure.
Public infra.
Mayor and council, we are not here to talk about private amenities. So the amenities is not what council's talking about. They're talking about the public improvement agreement that would have been associated with Venado Crossing.
The Venado Crossing Road is, is constructed, and there's a portion of it under construction right now in association with Unit Four.
Okay, just some background on why, why I ask that. We have some other developers that have PIAs that are supposed to be completed within 10 years, and we're near seven, eight, nine, and not one thing has been done. And so I'm just trying to get a gauge on where you all are at, that it's actively being worked on, that there is progress being made.
Yeah, and I know we're not here to discuss it, but to answer your question about the amenities, it is currently under design right now.
Great.
So it is proceeding forward.
Your neighborhood residents will be thrilled to hear that.
Any progression on commercial? Any talks? I mean, I'm not asking you to spill beans, but.
I have no idea on that. I, I don't, I'm not privy to any of that information.
I understand. But that's just one of those things where, once again, they promise, promise, promise.
Yeah.
Give us this cup. Give us, you know, this, and this, and this. And we'll ensure this. And here, once again, nothing. That's, that's, I know that you're just the messenger.
I'm the consultant on the residential side, so.
I appreciate it, sorry.
All right, any questions on the plat itself?
Mr. Sims, can you share who might be the developer in this particular?
I'm actually the engineer for the developer, Wayne Flores.
Wayne Flores, okay. That's the builder, that's what I mean.
No, they've, they've got it listed wrong. Mr. Sims is with Hartwood Development, or H, I'm sorry, HDC Venado Crossing.
Okay.
Yeah, they had it listed as him with the Colliers, but that's incorrect.
So HDC Venado Crossing LLC is the builder?
That's the developer.
Okay. Who will be the home builder?
Got Beazer.
Yeah.
Beazer's out there.
Okay. I know they have a couple, right?
Legends pulled out, Bella Vista.
They, yeah, these, these developers sell finished lots to builders, so.
There's two.
Okay.
Can you just pass a note that, you know, whenever, before it comes, make sure it gets complete. I, I understand Mr. Reed's statement. Believe me, I'm all over legislation, being on TML. I, I know the rules, but you know, you'll, you'll bring it to us and then last minute, okay, well, we'll, we'll fix those. Get them fixed the first time, pass that along, that's all I'm saying.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Venado Crossing Unit Six subdivision.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Cunningham. We vote. Seven oh, approved. Thank you, sir. All right, 9C. Nope, 9B we pulled because that, we couldn't get the equipment we wanted. It was already sold, so we'll go to 9C. Discussion action on the establishment of the Siblo Little League with the assistance of the Little League Baseball Organization. Mr. Howard.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to introduce Mr. Tony Knight. Mr. Knight has been involved with the Little League as a board member and an umpire since the mid 1990s. He is currently the District 31 staff that covers 16 leagues from Canyon Lake to Path, from New Braunfels to Hallettsville. He moved to Siblo in December 2022, and is currently the Red River Ranch HOA president. Mr. Knight?
Yes. Okay. Who's driving? Me? Morning, how's everybody doing? Like Mr. Howard said, my name's Tony Knight. Been with Little League for a while. We moved here in December 2022. Saw the facilities out here, so we figured it was about time to make a move. I'm sorry?
Mr. Howard's checking on your PowerPoint right now.
Yes. Oh, okay. Yeah, I like to keep these things kind of informal. Can I do that?
Yes, sir.
Keep them informal. You guys got any questions? I know we're going to cover a lot of material. I'm here for you guys. Thank God I didn't have to follow Ms. Siblo, that would have been a tough one. I'm going to have to get a better agent.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm going to wish you luck.
Which part?
On, on getting this started. I, I do, because I tried to start, well, I was part of a group that was trying to start, not the Little League, but BBYA, you know, baseball here. And it didn't, it didn't come to fruition. But I do want to wish you luck because baseball is one of my favorite sports. I mean, I've been announcing the Still High School varsity games for Still. My son graduated in 14, and I was still announcing them up until last year. So, I mean, I love baseball. So good luck on, on this endeavor. I'm hoping we can make it happen.
Well, we've got, we've got the support of Little League International. They're based out of Williamsport. You guys have probably seen that all on TV. I would like to take a second to thank Mr. Reed, Mr. Higgins, Mr. Parsons, Mr. Howard, you know, for their time and dedication. And we missed you the first meeting.
Right.
Because you were sick, and I'm, I'm assuming you feel better now. Because that was a few months ago. But yeah, I mean, the way the Little League is structured, we've got a district, District 31, it's got 16 leagues. We report our status to Williamsport every other month or so because they're interested in what we're doing. So we're going to, we're going to give it a best shot. So.
They're having some IT technical issues, so they're looking into it right now. But the PowerPoint will be pulled up shortly.
We may have it on our screens already.
It's on your screens.
Oh, my.
Well, then you can oversee, they have the same PowerPoint as you do.
Okay. Yeah, this is a presentation that we made to Mr. Reed and the, and the group. We're going to cover, I'm the numbers guy, so we've got some numbers in here. We're going to cover some other stuff that is relevant to what Little League is looking for. They're basically waiting on us to pull the trigger on it, and, and I'll explain that. We'll go through the logo, the boundary, we'll look at some estimates, look at some income and expense ratios or some numbers. And then with the, with the filled estimates, that will impact our registration. So we'll look at some of that stuff. The logo, we're kind of throwing around two things. We've got the main one that's on, that's on top, which is basically the city logo. The one below that, we're going to be, hey, there we go. The one below that is what we would use for what we call our All-Stars. It would be a shoulder patch that would go on it. The, the main logo would go on the, on the breast of the, on, on the breast of the uniform. So that's kind of what we're looking at. The boundaries, Little League is always district by boundaries. We had to get involved with New Braunfels Little League, Seguin Little League, and Greater Northeast Little League, because the way the boundaries work with Little League is these, this area was already encompassed within a Little League. Basically, New Braunfels and Seguin were the big two ones. The, the big, the big two leagues that we had to deal with. They have to relinquish this land in order for us to create a boundary. They've done that, we've got letters of approval, it's included in our charter submissions that we're going to be sending to Williamsport. But basically, we're looking at Siblo proper, Siblo city limits. We'll still be boundaryed with Seguin, that's kind of what, northeast of us, and then we've got New Braunfels. Right. Yeah, and, and the concern with the boundaries is, and, and the approach that we've taken is, we're not taking kids away from a league, we've given them an option. So somebody that lives up in around the 35 area, IH 35 and 1103 area, if they want to continue playing at New Braunfels, then they can keep doing that, or they can play at Siblo. So that's what kind of made the offer look really attractive to the leagues to give up the boundaries. This will be officially submitted with Little League as soon as we get all the paperwork and everything done. Whoa, hand drive.
May I interrupt real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
The boundary question makes me wonder, does somebody who's never played before in, in any of the sanctioned leagues suddenly now start up when he's 12 years old? Is he limited to the area where he lives?
That would depend on a couple of things. Little League has come out with new regulations, and this is the first year it's going to be implemented.
So there's not a black and white answer? It's?
No.
Okay.
Not really. But they've come out with a regulation that kids four to seven can play wherever they really want to. And if they got siblings, like a twelve-year-old, if the four- to seven-year-old comes to play at Siblo, then the twelve-year-old can come with them. But if the twelve-year-old wanted to play, if, if, within the boundaries, I mean, they have an option now. Before, they didn't have an option. If they were in New Braunfels, they had to play in New Braunfels. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what we did is, we went back, and I pulled the numbers from the 2022 census data, and based on the numbers that, for the Siblo growth, we factored out what our anticipated age groups would look like. We've got less than five-year-olds, we've got five to nine, ten to fourteen, and what the total is, the reason we stopped at the fourteen-year-olds is currently Siblo Youth Sports Complex has two, what they call sixty-foot diamonds, the small fields. Right. But we don't have a big diamond, or ninety-foot. So we stopped at fourteen. These are forecasted out based on the population growth the city's experienced, I think, for the last, I think it was like three point nine percent, three point two percent? And then we factored in shirts, too. Okay? Little League has two, two seasons. They have the spring season, which is the one you guys see on TV all the time with All-Stars, and then they have a fall ball program. The fall ball program is developmental. So we've split our registration numbers out per season to kind of give an idea. Now, when we factor this, being a numbers guy, I mean, when I was with nineteen and when I'm, when I'm thirty-one, I can kind of get the trends on it. Most of the leagues experience about an eight and a half, nine percent. Registration factored to the population, if that helps. We're factoring five percent for T-ball and two and a half percent for the lower divisions. Okay? So we're well under that, and we're still guesstimating about six hundred kids, which is going to be an important number when we look at field requirements. Fall ball, it's a shorter season, it's developmental. We factored in half of the percentage of our spring numbers, just to kind of get an idea, that's typically the trend for, you know, most of the leagues around South Texas. Because fall ball is, if you have somebody that's playing with the nine elevens, and they're going to be twelve next year, they're going to be playing in a different division. So it's, it's to gear them toward the next level. Okay? So we figure half of the people with that. We looked at our income. We're going to keep our registrations low because we want it affordable. Little League has a stipulation in their charter requirements that if somebody wants to come play and they can't afford it, then we have to, we take them anyway. We're not going to turn kids away. There's different programs that we can do with that. Most of the time, they might volunteer or night in the concession stand or something, but we will not turn kids away. I thought I saw a question coming. These registration numbers, T-ball at seventy-five minors, which is your seven to nine, seven to about ten, and then we got the majors, these are about a third of what San Antonio is doing right now. Couple leagues in San Antonio are in the three hundreds right now. Yeah. It's, it's expensive. We're gonna take ten dollars off for the fall, again, because we want, you know, the kids to participate. And I know I'm covering this pretty quick. We look at the viability, can we make a profit? We're not interested in really making a profit, but we want to be, you know, responsible with our cash flow. Based on the registration numbers and, and the registration numbers and our expenses and our, and our registration costs, we can do what we want to do. We may even drop the rates a little bit. I'm talking to a couple of people now, and what will help offset that, the registration cost is our sponsorship. Right now, we've got about thirty grand committed in our sponsorships, which is going to help. Field estimates, we are talking with, it's a company called Musco Lighting. This is something that we've talked about, about putting in lights at the fields. They've got grant programs, they've got a lot of different things. My perspective is, we're not here for handouts. This is, this is a team thing, no pun intended. You know, but this is a collaboration between us and, and the city. We moved here in December 2022, this is our forever home, so we're, we're here for the run. We're here for the fun, you know? And so we want to do whatever we can to, to find that win-win. That's what I'm all about. I umpire, and I like coaches, if you can figure that one. But what we've done is, we've taken the number of games per season, we've looked at the, the opportunities, how many game slots we could have during the week, and it kind of gives us an idea at the bottom, how many fields that we can have. Since we've only got two to begin with, we're to control registration because we don't want to get flooded. We have to be real careful with that. And we've got a committee who's looking into that, because we know when to cut off registrations. But we can get up to four fields. So what are we looking at? Hopefully, by the spring of 2026, we can have our first full spring season. Mr. Reed and I have talked about with the team that we might want to even consider trying to get fall ball in 2025. We've got our website built, I've got that done. Once we get our charter information, we can do registrations online. We've gotten a real good feedback in the neighborhood, through the schools, and everybody's kind of like, well, what are you waiting for? Well, I'm a little slow sometimes, but I'll get there. So the, 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 the impact in the community is there. We know it is. I've talked to two people today, and, and the interest is there, we're going to drive it. I appreciate everything, you know, the guys have done. We're going to make it happen. And we've got the support of all the way up to Little League International. So we want to try to get, we want to shoot for 2026. We want to try to test the waters, if you will, with fall ball in 2025. We're working projects with the lighting, maybe, you know, field construction, that's something that we've got on our radar, that we're going to look at. And I've talked to the district, some of you guys might know him, I don't know if it's a good thing, but Martin Poor, Mayor of Laverne, he's our district administrator. We're already talking about bringing in district All-Stars, and maybe even doing state here in Siblo. That is a wild ride. Because I've been to, I've been to state, I've umpired at state and regionals, and hopefully, I'll get a World Series this year, but we'll see what happens. But we're excited, and I appreciate the, the time to talk with you guys.
I'm excited.
Any questions?
I'm excited for you, because I was Little League over in Converse, when Converse had their Little League, growing up, and then.
Growing in northeast.
Yes. Well, it was Converse Little League at that time.
Oh, okay.
I'm old.
I'm, I'm not going there. We'll leave that one alone.
It was Converse Little League at that time. But, no, I'm looking forward to this. This is great. Like I said before, good luck. I know that there's going to be some questions with YMCA, because they control those fields right now. I hope that we can work that out, because that's one of the things, I'm with you on, they started off with two softball fields, that's what those are. I don't call them baseball fields, because they're not. They don't have infield grass, and they don't have a mound. They're softball field. The two on the backside, they'll be going to the east, are supposed to be ninety-foot baseball fields. Because I was on Parks Commission long before I got on the planning and zoning, before I got on council, so. No, I'm all for this.
One of the things that, I mean, a lot of leagues try to do it, and, and it's, and it, it's a tough league to do, but it's what they call a challenger division. It's for the, the physically impaired kind of players that come out. There's a buddy system that goes with that. We've gotten a real big response on, on the challenger program, and the field that's, I'm sorry?
Miracle field.
Miracle field is, is ideal. So we've kind of, we're, we're encouraged with that, too.
So I'm a logistics thinker, like, I want to know, how does this work? So who is staffing this? I know there's a lot.
I'm sorry?
Who is staffing it? Is that something that's going to be, you'll need someone in the city to help organize and schedule games, coordinate fields, all of that? Or does Little League provide a staff member to coordinate that?
We, we are, the, once we get a charter, we are self-sufficient.
Got it. How much space is needed? I know you talked about the fields that are needed, but you need four fields?
Well, long-term, I mean, that would be ideal, but, you know, Mr. Reed and I, and we've talked with the team, that if we need to phase into that, I mean, we can. I'd like to see next month have four fields, no, I'm just kidding. But there's.
Are you going to pay for them? Because I'm all in.
Hey, I mean, you know, we'll do what we can. I mean, we've got estimates.
Okay.
We've talked to other leagues, but, yeah, I mean, it's something, again, we want to grow into it, and, you know, this is, is not us and you, it's, it's a we thing. Does that make sense?
Yes. And I know that we do have some space over there off of Schaefer Road. I recommended looking into putting soccer fields down there as a cheap option, cheap and kind of fast option, but this may, that may be a good location to look at for expanding with more fields. We are very tight-budgeted. We're, don't have a lot of money for a lot of nice-to-have things. This is something that I think borders on need to have, just because we have a lot of kids in our area, and there's not a lot of things for kids available in our, in Siblo. So I, I do think that this is something that we can justify putting in our budget at least a little bit, but the cost is really going to be a consideration moving forward. With the fields, currently, the YMCA does have baseball. They do, they do have T-ball. And so I just want to make sure that everyone is coordinating, and that we're not just steamrolling the YMCA, and we're not letting them steamroll us and tell us what we can do with those fields, since taxpayers did pay for those fields. We should, we should be able to utilize them and come up with some kind of solution for that. The maintenance of the fields, I know Marion had some fields, and the, the group that was playing baseball on them was maintaining the fields. Is that something that Little League does, or is that something that the city will need to add to our parks? We already maintain them a little bit right now, but is that something that we'd need to include additional maintenance for? Or will Little League maintain and?
Well, that's something that, that we're gonna, that we're gonna work out.
Okay.
You know, I mean, you can imagine, there's probably a huge cost with that. It's something that I have no, no qualms about, you know, phasing into, you know, to get us on our feet and stuff. We've got a, we've got a girl who is really knocking doors down with sponsorships. She's already got thirty committed.
Wow.
And she's, I mean, she's telling me she could probably do a hundred and fifty.
Oh, wow.
So that would, that would definitely help with that. I mean, most of the leagues are self-sufficient. We've got, there was nine leagues in San Antonio out of the eleven that are in city parks, but they maintain their own fields.
Okay.
So, yeah. Not an issue.
And then, is there any city required contribution, other than signing the contract with you, and do we have an annual fee for?
Besides building a dome in, like, 2029?
Yeah, that.
No.
Okay.
No.
And then the challenger program, my ears perked up with that, I love that idea. I would love to see that expanded. I would love to see us get another miracle field, too, so we could have a little bit more out there, but really utilizing the one that we have would be fantastic.
Do you guys understand the challenger program? I mean, because the kids that play regular season are actually like their buddies during the game, so, well, I mean, you know. So, yeah, it's a.
No, that's great. We've.
I don't like watching it, because I'm an old softie. I start crying.
Oh, me, too.
You know? Okay, there you are. But, yeah, it's something we're definitely going to do.
Yeah, I'd love to see that field utilized a little bit.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I do have a question as well.
Okay.
So, and I might have missed this, would Siblo Little League be playing against the other surrounding areas, or are you just going to be playing Siblo teams?
We, that's, we could do both. Part of the thing that we're looking at with District Thirty-One, some of the smaller leagues. Now, we've also started talking with Marion. They've got about a hundred, hundred and fifty kids. They're, they're thinking about Little League, but they're not sure, but they want, might incorporate with us, the last time I talked to them. If we have about five or six hundred kids, we'll play the majority of our games with Siblo teams, but we also have the option to interleague, what they call interleague, with, like, Laverne or New Braunfels. I mean, I've talked to the league president at New Braunfels. We want to interleague with them, because they're like a higher caliber league right now, they've got over two thousand kids. So when, when you play that, I mean, it develops your, your players, you know? So we're looking to interleague with, with New Braunfels, we're looking to interleague with Seguin, Laverne. So, yeah, it's kind of going to be a mix of both. If we can get, if we can get eighteen games, then we'll do eighteen games.
Okay. And because I also talked to several parents that their children play select ball, and one of the questions that was asked is, like, if they're on the high school softball team or baseball team, would they be able to perhaps help assistant coach one of these teams to help get community service hours, or anything that may help them to mentor another student?
The way that works is Little League, everybody who is involved with Little League fills out a volunteer application to do a background check. What flags background checks are offenses against kids. So that is, well, a lot of leagues do that, have kids. I'd rather put a blue shirt on them and make them umpire something. You know, I mean, if we're going to get community service out of them, I mean, but, I'm sorry? Well, we get reimbursed, we don't get paid. But, no, there's, there's programs. I wish I knew who that was that was over here. He mentioned something about it. But we're going to recruit with the high school. I've got guys that are on the, on the umpire committee. We're going to develop kids from the high school to get them involved. Where we see a lot of kids getting involved with coaching is when their dads are managing. So that's something that we're going to encourage, and, and we'll get the kids on the field to umpire.
Well, if you want to get with me later, I, because my neighbor's a select, and actually, quite a lot of my neighborhood is select small players that are also at Still High School, so.
Yeah, we have a lot of people in our neighborhood that play BBYA, and our neighbor, I mean, they paid seven hundred dollars. So, yeah, it adds up in a hurry.
Mr. Reed, did you have something?
Mr. Robertchess, I was just wanting to share with council, remind you in our past presentations about the contract with the YMCA, they pay us, and I want to say it's around thirty thousand, if not exactly thirty thousand, and Mr. Howard's saying yes, for us to maintain those fields. So presently, we're getting paid to maintain those fields from the YMCA.
I, I'd like to, I mean, Ms. Cunningham has a great question on that. I know that at BBYA, each team would, and multiple teams, not just one, but would go out there on a Saturday or Sunday and do their maintenance, and mow them, weed eat them, manage them, the fields to, to keep them up, the upkeep, and sometimes we have to do it in the middle of the week, especially once you come to playoff time, so.
Yeah.
There's that, 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 that objective there that, you know, we could look at.
Sure.
Maintaining the fields where, you know, the Y wouldn't be paying us, we'd be maintaining them ourselves.
Yeah, it's definitely something on the radar, and that, you know, that we're talking about.
I'm, I'm glad that you've got Musco Lighting involved, because that's who put up the lights at the shirts ball fields with Musco.
Oh, did they really?
It was a lot of money.
It's.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah. It comes out to about seventy-five, eighty thousand, seventy-five to eighty thousand a field.
A field.
There was another thing I just thought of. Did y'all, have y'all looked at those fields, like, fully? Because I know the scoreboards don't work. The wiring was actually torn out of those scoreboards, and they don't work. So that would have to be fixed as well. Is that going to be a city expense, or would that fall on Little League?
We've already got commitments from other leagues that were, they're upgrading their scoreboards, and, and we're going to get their, their old ones.
Those score, scoreboards were put up by sponsors, so, I mean. Those score, scoreboards were put up by sponsors. So, I mean, and I know that we paid, they paid to put them in, but.
The kids went and ripped them out.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're getting a lot of equipment from Belverde Little League. We're getting some cash donations from Alamo Heights. So, yeah, we're trying to stay one step ahead.
I'm excited because I, I'd love to see Little League in Cibolo. I've, I used to, even when my dad was on council before I was here, would always mention it.
Well, I appreciate you guys stepping up and, you know, managing a team. That's gonna be fun.
I'll, I'll do it. I have no problem doing it.
Hey, I already got the team for you, buddy.
Okay.
All right. I, I think it's a great idea.
Well, that's my background. I'm a kinesiology major, so I mean.
I'm sorry?
Kinesiology major and I, I coached many of the teams, so yes.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve establishment of the city, of Cibolo Little League with the assistance of the Little League Baseball Organization.
Second.
And, and may I clarify, in that motion, we would bring back an agreement for council to approve.
To approve.
That is, with that motion, it is to bring back the agreement.
We're just at step one here.
Yes, sir.
Well, I thank you guys. It's gonna be fun. We'll see you on the diamonds. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right, nine.
No, we need a vote.
I thought I pushed it. There we go. Seven oh approved. Nine D, discussion action on the Cibolo Senior Program and authorizing the city manager to take action to sustain the program in fiscal year twenty-five with new costs not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Mr. Howard.
Good evening again. So I would like to give you guys an update. When this was initially put in, it was put in because on January seventh, Comal County reached out to myself and informed us that they would no longer be able to uphold the contract for servicing the senior center through the mills and being able to maintain the senior center, a senior center staffing position. It's a part-time position. So after a few meetings with ACOG and the Comal County, I just wanted to update you that thankfully, ACOG will be going out for an RFP for the services that Comal County was doing. I've also spoken with Comal County. They have agreed to maintain the contract of our staffing position until March thirty-first, which will overlap by the time the RFP will actually begin. So I've reached out to ACOG again. ACOG said that the RFP will be out by the end of this week. It will be advertised for two weeks and they will, they are expecting the services to begin March first.
I was at Commissioner's Court this morning and they dropped that news on the, the county, I guess on the sixth.
Yes.
That they were no longer going to be providing those services. And I know that Judge Kutcher had mentioned that they were going to ACOG and hoping that they would help. Because there's a lot of people out there that were relying on those mills. So that, they were gonna cut the check for the twenty-five hundred, because I think they were only paying seventy-five hundred a, a, a year. So they're gonna cut the check for twenty-five hundred and then they still had the five thousand to see what they were gonna do with ACOG to make sure that the people that need these mills will, will continue to get them. So I'm glad that you're stepping up on this and, and taking a lead on this. I'm grateful for them, for, for Comal, for all that they have done to get this project started. There's Stephanie there. I, I, I hope that we can continue this and, and make it, make it come to fruition. So I know that there was discussion in the Commissioner's Court this morning on this same thing. With that, I guess I'll make a motion.
Okay, so the Meals on Wheels program is currently being funded by Comal County, correct?
Yes. So they will end their services January thirty-first. Once they end, ACOG has partnered with a vendor who will cover until the RFP goes into effect. So there will be a small grace period throughout February where we will be working with another vendor through ACOG to provide the meals. And then after February, starting March first, is when whoever wins the RFP will be taking over the contract for the meals and for covering the part-time position.
Okay, so we're not really looking to full-time fund everything from here on out?
Yes, correct. So.
This is just a holdover until the RFP happens?
Yes. So originally, as I said, when they gave us the news and when this was inputted into the system, they had not came out with the news, ACOG had not determined or provided information on going out with an RFP. So the reason why this was initially put in is because without that RFP, we would need to be able to staff the senior center program. But also, we will be, we would need to be able to do everything that Comal County was required to do. However, now we will no longer be required to uphold everything that Comal was doing. Another organization, whoever wins that RFP will be doing it. However, ACOG did give us a few, a few things that we needed to work on, such as for our current senior center that we are in, we would just need to create and put up a fire evacuation map. So that way the seniors, so we just, we do need to get it up to standard, but it doesn't require any funding. It's just getting with our fire department, making sure that the seniors do and are able to find the map for fire evacuation and that they are aware of that evacuation process.
Well, that should have been there in the first place, in my eyes.
I completely agree with you, sir.
Okay.
So with the part-time position that we're funding, does that mean that we're keeping Stephanie on?
Yes. So we are still keeping Stephanie and we, the city is not funding it. Comal County is funding it until March thirty-first. So there will be overlap between when Comal drops the coverage and when the new organization who receives the RFP will be starting.
Okay. And then just.
Yeah, because I'm kind of questioning the thirty thousand dollars on here.
It's up to.
Yeah.
There can be, the RFPs are not always timely. Sometimes you have a timeline and it extends out and then contract execution takes time. And you have some agencies that don't want to work without a fully executed contract. Some don't care. They know it's in progress. And they'll start work at the beginning of the term of the contract without having that in place. So it just, it's dependent on the organization that wins that RFP. So I'm okay with that. I would like to, just as a side note to this, in the future, when we're moving into budget season, look at possibly hiring a second part-time staff. I know that we have a full-time volunteer who does a ton of work for the senior center. And I think being able to pay and get a little bit, well, we have a lot of full-time volunteers, but at least have like maybe a quarter part-time, point two-five time, times two. A, a little bit of money for additional staff for all the work that they're putting in would help us maybe be more efficient, especially as we move into a larger building that allows for more capacity, more events and things like that.
Mayor Protim and council, so my point tonight, and Ms. Cunningham said that well, so I won't repeat, that sometimes when we're cooperating and relying on outside agencies, we don't control their timelines. And so the ask tonight is for you to give direction as written in that cover sheet. Here's the bottom line. I don't want a member of our senior program to even have to be thinking about, do I or do I not have a program to go to tomorrow morning? They don't care if ACOG is providing it in the back or if Comal County Senior Center Foundation is providing it or the city. Your authorization, which I want you to give me, is so that you know that we're taking care of those seniors. And they don't have to worry about whether or not Stephanie has a job to take care of them, whether or not we have Meals on Wheels. And so that's why we came to you proactively tonight. My goal is we don't have to spend a single city dollar above what we already are. But if we do, because let's say ACOG falls behind, I would like Ms. Stephanie Whitson to still be showing up to support the senior program because we'll hire her as a temporary employee because you're authorizing me to do so, so that our seniors who are in the program don't notice a difference.
Okay, because that was a question that Ms. Roberts had just questioned me. What if the RFP goes out to somebody and that particular company decides they don't want to hire Stephanie? Because they would be the hiring consultant. So that answers a lot of questions right there. Because if she wasn't there, I think a lot of our seniors would exit stage left.
We, we all agree, sir.
I, I'm just.
You, if you authorize as, if you authorize as written in the staff report, we will make sure that Ms. Whitson remains with the program and that the program has no hiccup in service.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve nine B as stated.
I second that motion.
Seven oh, motion passed. Thank you all. Nine E, discussion action on Cibolo Valley Drive and Everyday Way intersection. Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens?
Thank you. I know we discussed this briefly sometime late last year regarding the traffic at Cibolo Valley Drive and Everyday Way intersection. And we had requested some recommendations from staff to see what could be done. I know I suggested based on residents' concerns of possibly putting a traffic light there, but we see some staff direction indicating that that may be too close to the traffic light on eleven oh three. So just kind of looking for our engineer to see if he could make some other recommendations regarding that, to see what can be done to create better traffic flow in that particular intersection.
What's funny, you should say that because if you look at the other intersection along eleven oh three and how you've got one eleven oh three in Maine and then you've got one right there at HEB and, and so I don't see why we couldn't, other than the fact that it's at a curve. So glad you brought that.
So I, I talked to Nick Aiello about this. He is our traffic engineer. And he recommended a three-phase approach to this. One is do the warrant analysis for a traffic signal to see if a signal is in fact warranted based on traffic counts. The school being in near proximity definitely increases the odds of a signal being warranted. If we determine that a signal is warranted, then we would need to coordinate with TechStop because it is only a couple hundred, a couple hundreds, I think it's seven or eight hundred feet to eleven oh three, which is closer than TechStop typically allows intersections with signals. So we would have to coordinate with TechStop and, and get their buy-off to put that signal there and then link the two signals so they work together. Because the last thing you want to do is go through the intersection, travel six hundred feet and then stop again. And then if TechStop buys off on it, then we would move into actually designing the, the signal and implementation of it. To do the warrant analysis, we're looking at about five thousand dollars to do the traffic counts and everything we need to do to do that analysis. And then if that works out, then to coordinate with TechStop and do the drawings and stuff, the schematics that they would want, is about another four or five thousand dollars. And then if a signal is warranted and TechStop agrees to it, you're looking at about fifty to sixty thousand to design the traffic signal with the interconnect to the eleven oh three. And then construction of a signal is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The, the actual construction of a signal would be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, so all in, you're looking at four hundred thousand plus. Something else that we did look at was the school and maybe looking at the way they do their traffic patterns around the school. When do they open the gates? It's slightly different issue, but I think it's all connected. I was actually driving through there today and, you know, at three o'clock, cars are already stacking up, you know, waiting to pick up their kids. So we, we probably want to coordinate with the school also and how they do pick up, how they do their, their flow patterns through the campus and see if there's some optimization that can be done there that would help all of the surrounding streets. And to do that, it's probably about twelve thousand dollars to, to do that.
What would be, let's say, for instance, could we, what would be the impact on traffic? For instance, if we just created that to be a right turn only and no left turn? Would that be a tremendous impact at the Borkfell traffic light? I know that's not what we're used to, but usually when you have, you know, more traffic coming through, our traffic patterns need to change. But I was just curious about that, what your recommendation might be, what your thought would be.
We would have to do the traffic counts there and see what the existing turning movements are. Not just during school hours, but throughout the day to make that determination and actually run a traffic model at the intersection. I think that would, that goes a little bit beyond a warrant analysis for a traffic signal. So there'd be some additional costs to that, but I don't think it'd be significant.
Okay, so that was gonna be my next question. If we could use the warrant analysis for the warning signal in conjunction with that, and if you're saying that it won't be that much more, how much do you think, just roughly?
I'd have to talk to Nick to confirm, but I'm thinking ten or twelve thousand dollars to do a warrant analysis with the, the analysis of adjusting the lanes, you know, to eliminate through lanes, add right turn lanes. Ultimately, one of the things we would recommend is adding right turn lane, not, not converting a lane, but actually adding a right turn lane. But now we're talking big dollars. I know four hundred thousand is not a small number, but we start adding turn lanes. It, it goes up exponentially rather quickly.
Mr. Reed, I thought we had traffic count, counters. Do we not?
Well, let Mr. Otto explain why if you're looking at a traffic signal, you need to have more current traffic counts and.
No, I'm talking about, we've got the, the equipment to do the traffic counts. Instead of spending five thousand dollars for somebody else coming to do it.
Y'all have the equipment to do traffic counts and y'all have done that at some intersections in the past.
Yeah.
Actually collecting the, the count data is like, like six, seven hundred dollars of the expense.
Well, that's a savings of six or seven hundred dollars there, Mr. Otto, instead of spending five grand.
I, I don't disagree, but I don't, I don't know that you have enough counters because we also need turning movements. And generally for turning movements, we'll actually set up cameras or multiple counters. And then we have to process that data to get the, the counts.
Okay, I understand.
So Ms. Sanchez Stevens, actually, the right turn only lane that you suggested, before the meeting started, I talked to Mr. Huggins about it. And if I misquote our conversation, please feel free to correct me. The one concern about doing a right turn only lane is once they go, they're gonna U-turn right in the middle of traffic to come back the other direction. That's all I want to say about that part.
There's just not a great answer for this, no matter how you look at it. Because we have businesses on both sides of the road and that's a very small road. What would, what would be the, I'm just thinking of a solution, make that a one-way road. The only way you do is come towards the church.
I mean, that's certainly a possibility, but it's hard for me to recommend anything without doing
Yeah.
the study to know what's gonna happen if we do it.
Yeah, it's just, there's no good way to go about this. I, I don't know if TechStop had ever even signed off on that being that close.
I mean, the signal at HEB is really close also.
Yes.
But HEB generates a ton of traffic. I'm sorry?
Yeah, so does Walmart.
So does Walmart. And Zaxby's. They all do.
Every, every business there does.
Well, it certainly is a concern and it is a safety issue. And that's something for us to.
I understand, but, but if, if we do it a one-way, then you've got that nursing, I only call it nursing home because the apartments, but the Brooks, that I think every Sunday morning in the last two months, they've been there whenever I've gone to church. So, I mean, you make it one-way, they're gonna have to go all the way around to HEB, I mean, all the way around Walmart to come in there. One-way is not the solution. Because they, our ambulance services, I mean, for them to get to them, that's at much more one, two minutes. that's at much more one, two minutes more to get there.
Mr. Reed?
Mayor Protem Roberts, I, I believe Mr. Otto could just give some advice to counsel that he threw out a lot of numbers and threw out some big numbers, but he started with a small number relative to the big number, and that was $5,000 to do the study. And if you authorize that direction, then we would do a.
The warrant analysis.
Work order for him to proceed under his master services agreement. We would bring that information back. And that would give Mr. Otto and his team some insight as to what are some options? You're talking about one-way, well, do the numbers support a one-way scenario? You're talking about limiting turn movements. Do the turning movements and the amount of traffic warrant, limiting turning movements? So if you allow him, if you direct me to have him do this, he'll bring back that information and then you can discuss options.
I agree with you, Mr. Reed. I think having.
I'm good with that.
Yep, having the information is better than not and not doing anything about it, absolutely.
And so Mayor and Counsel, of course, we don't have this in our budget. When you approved final direction on ARPA funds, we took $280,000 out of a particular ILA and we put that back in the general fund, because we're going to use ARPA. And you said, don't spend that money on anything other than one-time costs. So we will show this as a budget amendment in the future. And this will be the first time we dip into that $280,000. We'll use, was the figure 5,000, sir?
5,000 for the initial warrant analysis.
Okay, so we'll use 5,000 from that money to fund this traffic warrant study.
Okay, before going further, the 280,000 you mentioned, if it's ARPA funds, we had to already have it allocated.
So let me, let me.
Clarify, please, okay.
On December 10th, we came before you to demonstrate that we were fully utilizing all ARPA funds, that we weren't leaving any money on the table. Because of project savings, project cancellations, we did not have projects that we could allocate $280,000 to that would be starting in the future. And so we recommended, and counsel approved, the Shirts-Sybalo Dispatch ILA, that we would use that 280,000 from ARPA, put it towards that, which removed $280,000 of general fund dollars. And we put that back into the fund balance. And that's what I'm referring to, counsel.
Good, because I know that we had to have all of those funds allocated by the 31st.
And on December 10th, we confirmed that we were doing that, sir. And so if counsel wants to make a motion tonight, I would ask that you give direction for our city, city manager to authorize the city engineer to conduct a traffic, a signal warrant study?
Signal, yes.
Signal warrant study at Everyday Way and Sybalo Valley Drive, and that we would use that fund balance. That's it.
All right, well, then I, thank you very much, Mr. Reed. I appreciate that. Then I would like to go ahead and make a motion for the warrant study, for the $5,000 to come out of ARPA funds.
Not ARPA funds.
Nope, sorry.
Nope, you're out of the fund balance.
Not a general fund budget. ARPA funds are already done.
There we go.
I'll second that.
Yes, sorry.
Let's approve seven oh. Mr. Reed, also, could we, whenever you get that done and brought back, could we get a, just an analysis from the police department on accidents we've had at that intersection to compile with that?
That's actually part of the warrant analysis.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Just sorry if all of you made me think of something else. Does that traffic study involve, like, pedestrian?
I, I believe so.
Okay.
I'll make sure that it does.
That's one thing that we've gotten questions about, is the Brooks trying to, residents trying to go around right there has been tricky. So I was just wondering if it's.
Counting people is a little more difficult than counting cars, but I'll make sure that we include it.
Okay, thank you.
Please do, because like she said, I mean, there were people driving their scooters down Sybalo Valley Drive. And there was a police officer sitting here and he just cruising on. I'm like, come on. Now that we got sidewalks, hopefully that won't happen. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to 9F. Discussion action to approve a professional service agreement with Lionheart Places LLC for the Old Town slash Downtown Master Plan and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement in the amount of $160,000. Mr. Spencer?
Good evening once again, counsel. So as part of your strategic plan for FY '25 and FY 2027, there is a need to update the downtown, also called the Core Plan or the Sybalo Downtown Revitalization Plan, which was previously adopted in August 26 of 2014. That task is expressed in two of City Council's strategic initiatives. At its June 25, 2024 City Council meeting, city staff presented on the Sybalo Downtown Revitalization Plan, as well as the proposed scope, objectives and timeline of the Old Town Downtown Master Plan. Staff later returned to City Council at its September 24 regular meeting prior to issuing, issuing the request for a proposal to confirm the updated project objectives based on the feedback and direction received. Some project objectives that were identified in the Old Town Downtown Master Plan RFP were the vision for the Old Town Downtown area, the boundaries, economic development, parking needs, drainage, mobility, pedestrian safety, catalyst projects, events and gathering places, urban design, neighborhood preservation, recommendations to update the Old Town District Regulations in the UDC, as well as implementation and funding strategies. So the professional services agreement for the Old Town Downtown Master Plan will support the city council's strategic goals while building on the success of Old Town Downtown. It also aims to address the evolving needs of the unique area in Sybalo. So this project will align with the community's vision, as well as the city's long-range plans and initiatives. Following the September 24 presentation to City Council, the RFP was issued on October 15 with proposals due on November 15. The city's evaluation team carefully reviewed and evaluated proposals using weighted criteria, which included firm background, which is 10 points, project experience and qualifications, 35 points, methodology and technical approach, 30 points, ability to comply with the agreement, five points, as well as the cost proposal, which was 20 points. Nine firms submitted in response to the RFP. After thorough evaluation, Lionheart Places LLC scored the highest, earning 96.3 out of 100 points and was identified as the most advantageous proposer for the city. Lionheart Places is a Texas-based firm with extensive experience in downtown master planning. The firm has completed similar projects for several communities that have won awards and received national recognition from the American Planning Association, Urban Land Institute and the American Society of Landscape Architects. So with the detailed proposal and proving track record, staff believes that Lionheart Places is well-prepared to meet the goals and objectives identified in the RFP. The FY '25 budget included $160,000 in EDC funds, which were allocated to update the city's existing downtown plan. So staff, the staff's evaluation team recommends that City Council approve the professional services agreement with Lionheart Places for the Old Town Downtown Master Plan and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Staff is available if you have any questions and a representative from Lionheart Places is here as well.
Does anybody have any questions?
I got no questions, I just got a statement. I, I mean, this, this is Old Town. Downtown is where you've got your businesses, the people go and they shop at. This is, other than the mill, and I'm glad the mill's there, but this is Old Town. Downtown is about a quarter mile up the street on Sybalo Valley Drive, where all the business is and all that is. This is the focus on Old Town because of its mixed use. This is, this is Old Town, not Downtown. Downtown is a quarter mile up the street.
Yeah, and that was, that was something that came up whenever we were doing our comprehensive plan update with our master plan advisory committee in terms of what people saw as downtown, what people saw as Old Town. So that's definitely something that we'll look at. That's what we have in here, is examining the boundaries. So if we are wanting to limit the boundaries of the existing Old Town District that you see, like, in the zoning map with the overlay district, or are we wanting to expand it to include that area outside of the current Old Town? That's something that we will have addressed with this plan.
That's why I wanted to bring that up to you, because we're looking at downtown where business, I mean, it's up there by the Walmart, the HEB, the Brooks, New Whataburger, that's, that's the downtown, not down here.
I have a question. In the packet, it says there's exhibits of scope of services, but there's nothing here. Can you please tell me why?
There shouldn't.
Or what this should be?
Exhibit A for scope of work.
Exhibit A for scope of work is not included.
And then Exhibit B, payment turns, is not here either. None of the exhibits are in the package.
I think that is Exhibit B.
A is blank and C is blank.
Yeah.
Is that, are y'all looking at the professional services agreement?
Correct.
Yes.
The, so that was one of my questions to Ms. Roberts, was that there's no Exhibit A and it's one of the scoring points. Some of the scoring points were given based on ability to comply with Exhibit A, terms and conditions, and they're not in there. And then it's referenced in the contract a few times, Exhibit A. And I'm like, what does that mean?
Where is Exhibit A?
So I know that the professional services agreement that's in your packet was. The scope of services that was provided by our procurement specialist. That's, it's possible that that may have been out of the document, but I do know that one of the requirements for submitting back to the city their proposals is, is that requirement. And that was included within the, the response for each of the firms that, that responded. So even though, and I apologize that it, it might not be in here, I know for a fact it was for the RFP.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to table this item then and tell.
Yeah.
I'm new to the council. I don't know what the scope of work or scope of services is. I'd like to see what it is, please.
Sure.
I had a, before we actually table it, I did have a couple more questions. So scope of work was a big one. What are we doing? Change orders, there's a section in there on change orders. And I just want to confirm that it says that 25% of 50K, when there's a change order that meets that, that it comes to council. 25% is $40,000. That is the accumulation, the cumulative change orders. So you can have a change order for 10, then a change order for 20, then a change order for 30. That cumulative total is over 40 and then that would come to council, right? There's a trigger?
Yes, Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, and it's not just if we have a change order that's at 40,000, then all of a sudden it comes to council. It's the sum of.
Yes, we have always abided by that.
Okay.
That's the way we operate.
As for expanding, I'm glad that y'all touched on that. That is something that I was confused by with our old, our previous Old Town boundaries. They didn't really make sense. And there's been a lot of discussion in recent years about Main Street, about HEB. And so I would like to make sure that this is included. The disconnect between our Old Town Revitalization Plan, our old comprehensive plan, our old UDC, prevented us from developing, along with not setting the plans to the side, never looking at them, contributed to some of the issues that we're running into now with drainage, with infrastructure, with people needing or wanting to rezone and us not really having the ability to rezone. So I do want to make sure that, I saw that the date that this would be finalized is September 1st. With the UDC, do you know off the top of your head when we plan on having the UDC completed?
That should be July of 2026.
Okay, so they'll be running concurrently. I just want to make sure that we don't run into an issue where this gets done after the UDC is done and now they still don't jive. We still can't do what we planned here. Even though this downtown revitalization plan is great, our UDC is still preventing us from accomplishing that. And then we're right back in the same place we are right now. So that is, is something that we definitely need to do. And so I'm very much in favor of this, but I do agree with Ms. Roberts that I think we should table it until we all get to see the scope of work and then move forward with it.
Yeah, and Mayor, Counsel, I support that. I'm looking at the actual professional services agreement, scrolled all the way down to those exhibits. They're not there. You should not approve a PSA if you don't have that information. So we'll bring this back.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion in second?
I'll second it.
You made a motion, second?
Seven oh, motions, F is tabled. All right, we're going to skip over one to keep it in the proper order. We're going to move to H, discussion action regarding the final acceptance of public infrastructure for Legacy Traditional School. Mr. Spencer?
You actually get me on this one. So traditionally, traditionally, Legacy Traditional School has petition for final acceptance. The site is 16.47 acres and the plat was recorded April 20 of 2023. They installed 365 linear feet of 12-inch water line, 2,012 linear feet of 8-inch water line. They constructed 368 linear feet of Cove Lane and 301 linear feet of 6-foot sidewalk. Total valuation of public improvements being dedicated to the city is $314,025. I have done a final acceptance walk and generated a punch list. I have also verified that they have addressed all of our punch list items. And therefore I am recommending final acceptance of the infrastructure.
Make a motion to approve H.
Mahoney?
Six one, motion pass. Thank you. All right, we'll jump back up to G, discussion action regarding the replat of Legacy Traditional School, Sybalo Valley subdivision. Mr. Spencer?
Yes, so the owner is School of Excellence in Education. Representative is Matthew Hilbig with Colliers Engineering and Design. The area is approximately 16.47 acres. This is located at 3200 Sybalo Valley Drive. Current council place district, or council place is 3, previous council district 5. Property zone, neighborhood commercial, C1. The utility providers are the City of Sybalo for sewer and water, GVEC for electricity. The purpose of the replat is to create a new lot just north of the existing Legacy Traditional School for potential future commercial development. This is off of Cove Lane. There's an extension off of Cove Lane from Town Creek to Sybalo Valley Drive. Per the city's master thoroughfare plan, Cove Lane will be extended and widened to a public thoroughfare of 66 feet of right-of-way. The developer has tied into an existing 16-inch water main along Sybalo Valley Drive and will provide an 8-inch loop within the property. Sewer connections are tied to an existing 8-inch sanitary sewer line on Sybalo Valley Drive with a 6-inch sewer service lateral. The stormwater management plan was submitted in November of 2021 and approved with the original plat. According to FEMA maps, no portion of the property is located within the 100-year floodplain. Parkland dedication is not applicable on this property. However, landscaping requirements will be met per Article 17 of the UDC. Staff and the city engineer have reviewed the plat and associated documents. Per the attached review memo, the plat has received conditional approval pending the recordation of right-of-way easement. Therefore, staff recommends conditional approval of this replat.
Okay. Do we have a motion on G?
I have one quick question if I'm.
Okay, go ahead.
So I see up here that P and Z denied 7-0. Do they state a reason?
The reason was kind of like the previous plat that you all had considered tonight. It was due to outstanding comments. Those comments have been addressed. So for these reasons, we're recommending conditional approval. reasons, we're recommending conditional approval due to that easement that needs to be recorded as a separate instrument.
Mr. Spencer, was, was the outstanding comment or outstanding comments, can you just clarify what those were?
Sure.
And I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the report.
Yeah, I think the, for, in your, in the city engineer's letter, it talks about those comments. So specifically, they were not, at the time, having certain easements in the recording information on there. There were some other comments in terms of the specific certifications that were shown. So certifications, as well as the easements and the recording information, with the exception obviously of the right-of-way, were, were included in this revised plat.
And so Mr. Otto's also here to verify as city engineer that the applicant's engineer survey did meet those since last week.
Yes, all, all the comments were very minor, and they have addressed those since the P&amp;Z meeting.
Questions? So everything does match up?
Yes, sir. All, all comments, planning, engineering, fire, public works related, have been addressed.
I will move for approval.
I'm gonna move for approval to nine G.
I'll second.
Seven oh, motion passed. Moving to nine I, discussion action regarding the final acceptance of public infrastructure for Dutch Brothers. Mr. Spencer? Well, no, Mr. Otto.
I'm back.
You're back.
So Dutch Bros has, has petition for final acceptance of the infrastructure. Dutch Bros was recorded, and by the way, it's Dutch Bros, I learned. They don't like it when you say brothers.
What? Is that for real?
That's for real.
Never knew that. Dutch Bros.
So the plat was recorded January 24th of 2020. They installed 308 linear feet of waterline, 921 linear feet of sanitary sewer. The total valuation of public infrastructure being dedicated to the City of Siblo is $179,824. Once again, we did do a final acceptance walk, generated a punch list, and I have gone out and verified that they did address all punch list items. Therefore, I am recommending final acceptance of the infrastructure.
All right, thank you. We have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the final acceptance.
All right, and- All right.
Thank you.
Seven oh, motion passed. Nine J, discussion action on the council seating at the DIAS.
Simply, I just wanted to state that I'm first of all thankful that it was back into its original form, so that when the public gets to view these meetings, it's from one to seven here. And, and also, it's very, it's much more accommodating for Ms. Roberts just as well. I, I would just request that in the future, certain items like this, one decision to be made for all of council, maybe weighing that in discussion would be most considerate. And that's just what I wanted to discuss here today. But, so just moving forward, if we can just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, nine K, discussion action on appointing capital improvement advisory committee members or to appoint P&amp;Z as the capital improvements advisory committee. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Roberts, and good evening, Council. The purpose of bringing this item before City Council is to highlight the next steps with appointing members following Council's direction on January 14th to reestablish the Siblo Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. As the cover memo identifies, all previous appointments for individuals to serve on the kayak, as the capital improvements advisory committee term is abbreviated kayak, those terms have expired. We need seven members with four members having experience in the industries of real estate, development, and/or building. That's per our ordinance 1323. Of the seven members, one would be from P&amp;Z Commission, one must be from the EDC Board, and one from the ETJ. The city secretary has confirmed that all previous kayak members, which are listed in the cover memo, still reside in the city limits, except for the ETJ member. He would be living in the ETJ. I've directed the staff in planning and in economic development to go before the P&amp;Z Commission and the EDC Board to request that those, the commission and the board members discuss who on the commission, on the board, would like to volunteer for a three-year term, recognizing that for the next several months, there will be a monthly obligation to meet. But for the remaining term, this three-year term, they have an obligation to meet once every six months as required for our impact fees. And so I would be bringing back what the recommendation is from the commission and from the EDC Board. So if Council's acceptable of that approach, so that the volunteer is actually someone willing and able to put in the time for this important appointment, that's the way we would bring back a recommendation to City Council. And then I, I'm asking Council, we need volunteers to step up for the other positions on the kayak. I happened to meet a gentleman who was part of the chambers leadership core class, and we, annually, they combine, we do a presentation in early January. And the gentleman happened to say he was a Siblo resident. He works for an engineering firm, I said, and he wanted to get more involved. I said, I might have an opportunity for you. So I've encouraged him to apply because he would satisfy one of those three service areas. I don't know the gentleman other than that brief meeting, so he would be just an applicant. And so City Council, tonight, I'm not looking for a motion or a direction from you. I was here to reemphasize how do we get the kayak back together and fulfilling the purpose of the kayak. And so if you know anybody that you think would be a good applicant for this, please encourage them to apply. They will go through the city secretary. We will bring them back. It's my goal, your last meeting in February, that we're appointing at least a quorum of the committee and meeting at least four members as required to be, have experience in those three industries that I listed earlier.
I've got no problem with this, Mr. Reed, but I thought we'd given direction. But I like your, your, your approach to this is to, to go to those two boards, get a member of each of those boards. Also, I would suggest that maybe get an alternate from each of those boards, where if one of those boards members can't make it, they can show up in that one's place, if possible. But, yeah, we need to go out and find, and I know that she sent a list that has all the previous, I don't see where Bob Robertson would have a difficult being involved. Has he, has he reached out to you?
Yes, he's turned in his application to be, and two of them that were on the committee have, have resigned. So Mr. Freyas and Mr. Peak no longer want to be on the commission, so they have resigned.
Okay, so we need to go out and find people. And that's, that's no problem. I appreciate-
We have received two other applications also.
I thought that we had given direction last time, but I appreciate you bringing it up, mentioning that-
Mr. Hick, yes, you did give that direction last time.
Okay.
I was, I was here just to let you know, I'm trying to-
You want to do it that way. Okay, that's, I've got no problem with that.
I'd like to make a comment just really quick. So on our website, a lot, okay, so if we're gonna do this to this board, and I know we're probably gonna discuss this later, is that if these terms have been, because I see on our website that everyone who's on the current advisory board, no term has expired. So those have been extended to their second term as the rest of them have on, across the board. So if we're gonna do that for this board, then we need to go reflect back the original terms, term expiration dates on the other boards just as well, and be more consistent and concise, because we can't do it to one board, eliminate them. Because my original motion was to reinstate the current board members, because I was going off of the current dates, that no one has expired. And so I was hoping that they would be contacted. They could resign if they no longer wished. I personally reached out to someone on here, and I said, hey, were you contacted based on the agenda packet? And they said, no, I was not contacted. So it, are, are we, are we just going to, you know, scoot them over, or would it be more appropriate and considerate to reach out to them and see if they would consider coming back?
Okay, so we did reach out to all of them. We sent them an email. We also tried to contact them by the phone number that we have listed. And we only heard back from the, the, we heard back from Marcus Matley and John Freyas and Paul Peak. Those were the only ones we heard back from. And I assumed that, that maybe, I assumed the wrong thing, that once you looked at all these committees and commissions, that everybody that had termed out and had not come back to you in the past, because you had, didn't want them to come back until you had a policy, that all those people would be coming back to get reappointed. And it wouldn't extend. That was my, that's what I thought that you were going to do, because on most of your committees and commissions, those people have not come back to you because they put a halt on those, not coming back until you guys decided how you were going to do it. So none of those people, they've all termed out. They carry forward until they hit that six years. If they six to six years, then we, they were released. But anyone that hadn't hit the six years, we kept them on, waiting for you to make a decision. As a council, what do you want to do? Do you want to reappoint them? Do you want them all to re-interview? That's what we're waiting on, to get an answer from you. But we did reach out to all of the people on this committee.
And that was kind of the point that I brought up at the end of the last meeting, is that exacts the issue.
Shall we, I, I would like to share that agenda item with you for the, yeah, because I think we're gonna get off topic, and we have to stay according to the discussion for this one.
Right.
But I'll get it first, Jeff, so you can mention that.
I hope we've answered your question there, Ms. Sanchez-Stevens, that the city secretary's office did actually attempt to get all of them to respond.
If there was somebody that reached out to you, and we did, we, maybe we have the wrong email now or wrong phone number, if you have something that we can get a hold of that person, we were, we are more than welcome. But, but we, we, we emailed, we have the emails to prove that we emailed those people, you know. We checked the voter registered list also to make sure that those people still were registered voters in our area. Maybe they had moved out because we hadn't heard back from them. So I, I don't know what else to do.
With, with, that's getting off subject. I just want to make a motion to approve K as, as written.
And, and, and tonight, no, no formal motion is required.
Yeah.
It's really clarification.
Discussion action, so.
And, yes, sir. Under my cover sheet, I just clarified that City Council may give direction in the form of a motion, so you can't do that. There's no formal action for tonight. So what I've heard tonight is the ETJ member who served previously has reapplied. So check, that's one of six. We have Marcus Matley, who's on the EDC. So he, if the EDC Board supports him, he would be the nominee to council for the EDC. Will be asking the P&amp;Z Commission. Aaron's already left, so I'm not looking at anybody over here on my, my left. So we're down to five. I'm confident that someone from the P&amp;Z Commission will step up. So you're down to four.
Well, we got two alternates in here tonight, so.
They still have to meet those, that, we still have to have-
We still have to meet that criteria.
We still have to meet that criteria.
Again, my whole purpose is if you know anybody who wants to be more active, encourage that application. That's really what I was asking.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if anyone in the P&amp;Z or the EDC meet the criteria.
Right, so right now, we're not aware of anybody who's stated that they're applying, meeting the three industries of real estate, development, or building.
Okay.
All righty, thank you very much.
I would just like to say one more thing. In considering and re-establishing this particular committee, I had a chance to meet Mr. Bob Robertson, very knowledgeable in the area. I highly respect him completely. My only cause of concern that there may be a conflict of interest, that we are gonna be doing fiscal impact fees for our wastewater down south of Siblo, and he does sit on the JV Sud Board as an elected official. And I feel like there may be a conflict of interest there with him setting those impact fees. This is nothing personally. I just would like for things to be, if there's any optics that there are being, I do not want him to be in the center of attention of that. So I just thought it'd be worth mentioning to the rest of council.
Yeah, because at the last TML workshop we went to, they mentioned conflicts of interest and, and how they could overlap. So, yes, we gotta look at that as well. Thank you.
Be something up for discussion. So you, you don't want to, I'm sorry, Mr. Hyde.
So first of all, to answer that question, it would be a perception of conflict, because the position here doesn't have any authority. They just make a recommendation that the position here. So since they don't have any authority other than recommending, it would not be a conflict, because they don't have the authority to take any action for you. And the second part is the, and, and so it's still a legitimate reason that you may not want to put him there. I was just clarifying that it, it's not a legal requirement that that establishes a legal conflict. The second part is that the Texas Engineering Commission and the Texas Real Estate Board, all of those people, their names and addresses are typically available from the state entities of which they are licensed. And so if you were to ask them for everyone that is licensed that lives in Siblo, or everyone that's licensed in the real estate, you might identify those people that you may need, that are residents here that you may want to approach to, to meet those requirements.
And I completely respect your, your, what you just voiced, Mr. Hyde, and because, as you said, the perception, right? And we've kind of already walked down this road, and there was like a 50/50 thing. I think just it would be better to avoid the whole thing again, you know, with the utmost respect, you know, to all JV Sud Board members. They do a great deal already in our community for servicing the water in portions of our city. So this is not about that at all. It's just about protecting the perception of our boards just as well. Thank you.
You don't need a motion?
No, sir.
Just give you the direction.
I'm just encouraging all of you to help us out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nine L, discussion action on the procedure for reappointing members to committees, commissions, boards, corporations, and forming an interview committee for reappointments before going to council for final approval. Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens?
I would like to, I would like to defer this first, to start with Mr. McLaughlin, simply because he actually requested on the agenda to discuss the reappointment for members. And so I'd like to share this with you.
All right, thank you. So, yeah, I think we as a council need to establish some guidelines, right? We all got the report of absences. We have some that have been absent more than others. These boards, commissions, they meet 11 times a year. So missing more than three meetings is a good chunk of the meeting season. And to Ms. Peggy's point, we need people to reapply after three years. That was the standard we have. I don't know when it stopped, and that's fine. But we've had quorum issues in the past on different boards and commissions. And so by kind of forcing them to come back in after three years, reapplying, they're reaffirming their commitment to us, that they're going to attend these meetings, they're gonna show up, when they need to show up. We're gonna make quorum. We're not gonna waste staff's time. I'll admit I'm a little jaded, because the last board meeting I was supposed to sit on, we didn't make quorum, and it's embarrassing. So if we have members that, for whatever reason, aren't attending, don't want to attend anymore, we need to reestablish some guidelines. Think at one point, it was if you miss, was it three consecutive or three total meetings? Think at one point it was if you miss, was it three consecutive or three total meetings?
The charter does say three consecutive meetings, the city charter does, but your policy says just three meetings in a year.
Well, we need to look at that because three consecutive, that's that's a problem. But three all year.
You could miss three, then come to a meeting and miss three more. So I mean.
No, well, you missed you missed three consecutive and we could remove them. So.
I think it also depends on the reasoning for the absence. I know we've had, one of my representatives for one of the bigger committees, his father was very ill in another state and then ended up passing away. So he missed meetings that were not within his control. And we had another member who was on maternity leave, I believe, and unable to make the meeting. So I think that it really is dependent. We worked on this policy last year, earlier this year. And we went over it, how to appoint people to meet, how to appoint people. Were we going to do a subcommittee? Because we did recommend doing a subcommittee who would interview the candidates and then we weren't having them come up and saying, can you make the meetings? Do you know what times they're at? Like, it's just silly to ask the same question over and over again. So we recommended the subcommittee. That did not pass. People still wanted to have the full panel interview. But we haven't really done any appointments after that. So I do think this is something that needs to be looked at and maybe it's a I I don't know where to go from here because we've we've talked about this multiple times and we've had this this policy. I've talked about our council policies as a whole are pretty terrible. Like our policies that we have. We have the personnel policies for staff and then we should have policies of procedure of how we operate as a council and those have been scattered and inconsistent. Like Ms. Peggy was saying, our charter says after three consecutive, they're kicked out, but our policy says after any three. Well, any three seems pretty prohibitive, more prohibitive than our charter. So technically, we're within the realm of being okay. And we can, they they serve at the pleasure of council, which is a weird weird phrase to me. But I do think that that's something we need to look at and maybe you and Norma can work on that together and come up with a proposed edits to what we have because it's not working.
Counsel, would you like me to resend those policies out to everybody again? There's two policies, really. And just to look at them because every time you've looked at them, you've never come up with anything, finalizing anything for us to really what are we supposed to do? Because you never given given us any more instructions on what to do, you know. You you vote on something, you deny it, then you don't come back and say, well, let's go ahead and continue doing what we did before. You know, it's just left on the table and we don't know what we're doing. So we could just pass them all out, give them by tomorrow, we'll have them all out, the the policies out to you. And then if you want us to put it back on the agenda at the end of February to or the beginning of February, I've got a an item that you wanted on the agenda for all the attendance and any appointments go on to the first of the month. And that would be February, the first even month. So we do have some applications. So I was going to start bringing those applications back to you. And on the first meeting in February with the attendance and every every even month from then on, the first meeting of every month, you'll get applications that come in and you'll get the attendance for every every committee that we have. And then you're going to have to decide what you want to do because our hands are tied. All we can do is give you the information and then you need to tell us what you want us to do. But I will get the two policies out to everyone by tomorrow.
I don't I don't want to restrict it to just the first month or the first meeting of the month because it is the even it is the even months that we we per our policy, we went to even month because we were having every council meeting, we'd have appointments, we'd have appointments every single meeting. And then Mayor Boyle had suggested we do it every other month. And that's fine. We can do it every other month, but restricting it to the first, whenever we got some people that could make the first meeting, but they could make the second meeting. We just need to restrict it to, you know, the even number of months you could appoint at either one of them. That's how I look at it. Because we've got to get people appointed to these meetings.
I think that if the two of y'all, if you're willing to work on that together and come up with an idea, I think, and then bring it back at the next meeting. And if Ms. Peggy, if you'd send that out to us, that'd be very helpful. I think that too, when we look at this, one of the other things that has been kind of a barrier is the application itself. It's very lengthy. There's a lot of questions. Sometimes you have people who I struggle with taking all the words in my head and limiting it down. And I can see that with some of the applicants, they put a whole lot in there and I'm not sure how much we're actually reading it and giving it the review it's needed. And then others just skip them. So it's not really consistent what's being done. So maybe we revamp our application. I don't know. That might encourage some people to apply too. I've seen a lot of applications where they just cross out the date, they put a new date on it, it's the same one they applied with three years ago. So that may be something to look at as well.
Mr. Hyde.
Yes, I wanted to clarify that on page twenty eight of your charter, under Boards and Commissions, subsection five, it reads, unless specified otherwise by a previous ordinance, any member of a board, commission, or committee who is absent from three consecutive regular meetings or twenty five percent of regularly scheduled meetings during the twelve month period immediately preceding and including the absence in question, without explanation acceptable to a majority of the other members, shall forfeit their position on the board, commission, or committee.
Right there, it says exception. And if they've got an exception where, hey, I had to work and and they wrote in and they said, hey, I've got I've got work. You you can't kick them off for that re I mean.
Well, I mean, it's obviously a volunteer position and
I understand.
It's hard to, I mean, it is hard to hard to balance it.
I understand, but I mean, we're going to.
Yeah, because what if every month that they're supposed to be at a meeting, they could send an excuse that they have to work? They know these meetings are going to happen.
Yeah.
So I mean, that was something we would have to look at, that they could be removed, perhaps.
Mr. Hyde.
We may be able to create a criteria of what is an unacceptable reason. And so, you know, if if they are working every every time, then they don't need to be on that board. And it's not offensive to them. It's just you need people that will come and participate.
Correct.
And if they can't participate, then maybe there's a different role they could play that they could meet at their schedule to help the city.
I think we also need to have something in there that the council member who appointed them or whatever district they're serving or however we're going to do the places now, because we haven't even discussed that yet. Places versus districts versus who appoints what. The we haven't discussed that yet, but when we do, if you want to remove the person who's in your spot in in your district or whatever, then there should be a discussion with that person beforehand to kind of figure out what's going on. Because otherwise, we won't know that they're absent for a reason. Sometimes they just get caught up in life and they forget to tell them or they're being excused at the meetings, but we just see the attendance report that says that they've missed four.
So let me let me just to clarify, you're saying that, for example, if it was somebody in my district, that it would sort of be on me to verify that they really are at work or really are sick or what do you?
No, you don't have to go get a doctor's note or anything. What I'm saying is that if you're if you're saying, if you notice or it's been mentioned that you have someone who possibly should be removed for whatever reason, behavior for attendance, for whatever reason it may be, if you're thinking about removing a member of the board of the of a board or committee, then you as that person's district or whatever we're going to call it now should reach out and meet with them or try to discuss it with them. Obviously, that's not going to be a perfect system and maybe that's not even something we put in a policy. Maybe that just should be a best practice that we implement, but I think that there does need to be communication. We appoint people and then we're, a lot of times what happens, and it happened with me when I was on committees, you get ghosted. You never hear from another council member ever again. And you you do these reports. I was on one committee where we did an eighty page report, Communication and Technology Committee. We presented it to council, never heard of it from anyone ever again. Never heard it from them during the committee, never heard from them after. It was like, okay, we did all this work for what? There was no communication about it, no communication on should we extend this committee, should we change anything? So I think that in general, we need to do a better job of communicating with the people that represent our district slash place. And that would also apply to appointing or removing them.
And I think that kind of brings me to the next section, the second part to this agenda item, right? About maybe possibly forming an interview committee. It says here for reappointments, but it was for actual appointments, reappointments, and also removals just as well. So this would include chairpersons from these particular committees. That way, they can be active participants in interviewing those who come on board to their committees. And doing so, they could also help with the absence just as well. And this particular committee could also go to those persons instead of one individual council. So the whole idea behind this is let's de-politicize it so that there's just no angst against that council person, like you removed me, you're the one. And yes, exactly. But if we do that.
Sorry, go ahead.
But if we do that as, you know, as a group, which it has been done in other cities before, they'll bring someone in and they'll let them know you've been absent three times in a row. And you your 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 slot is forfeited. We just wanted to make it known. And and then we would have to refill your seat. So that was the whole reason behind it. So it was more of a community effort of who was on board with that. And I did want to just make mention that since having been on council regarding the reappointments, I was actually looking forward to seeing a reappointment being done. When I noticed a couple of members coming up for reappointments, I was, I I came to both Ms. Peggy and also Mr. Hyde. And it was early in in January twenty twenty four and we were still in the process of getting our new policy directive rewritten. But I deferred to let's use the current policy and let's get the reappointments because we were, we had, you know, people's applications stacked and a reason that was given just as well is that these are holdovers. You know, there's also people who had termed out and they weren't stepping aside. And I guess you would think that a person, if they're termed out, they in within themselves would come off and say, hey, here's my reapplication. I'd like to go. But they're not doing that. So.
To be fair, they may not know. Because a lot of them are filling unended terms, like so Jeff was on board of adjustments. Whoever filled his term is going to be filling the remainder of his term. So they are not just three years from the date that they start. They may have a weird off term.
An interview committee may also be helpful to let them know what they're filling in, what their length of their term may be. They can also look at the terms that are coming up and then they can go ahead and talk to those commissioners or people's on the board, letting them know the term. Are you deciding to come back? Does it still fit within your schedule? Would you like to? Then here's your application for reappointment. Come back to our interview committee and redo that. And obviously, the interview committee is something also of a recommending committee that will come to council and we would be we would see who is being recommended. And if we have additional questions, we can ask those. And then we can approve the appointments. That way also it falls in line because per our policy, we're supposed to be doing our appointments thirty minutes before our our council meeting, right? And maybe we can make adjustments to that policy just as well if we add the interview committee where we would have time, just thirty minutes, see what the recommendation is with the interview committee and the appointees. Have them here, ask a few questions if we need to, do the appointments and then we start a city council meeting at six thirty. Just thinking about how can we streamline this a little bit better? And that way, we can get our chairpersons involved in the interview process. And that way, they can do a little bit of the vetting too and the welcoming just as well and get to know these persons. So just creating more of a community sense about it.
The only hesitation I have with that, I like the idea of a committee, but I do want just to make sure we're considering if we're having a committee to discuss someone being removed, if I walk into a room with two, three, four, however many people and they're going to tell me how terrible I am and how they want to kick me off the committee, that's really intimidating. And I don't think that's the intention here, but that is how it will come across to a lot of people. So I do want to be careful in that. I like, I do like the idea of a committee for that reason because I do think it de-politicizes it. If you have just random council members there, then it's not necessarily a personal, it doesn't come across as much as a personal vendetta. But I do, I would not want to walk into a room with three or four people that are telling me, you suck. That's, I think that there's probably a better a way to do that effectively that wouldn't be as intimidating or as like.
So I guess, Mr. Reed, have you experienced an interview committee at any other city that you have worked at before? And how did they remove anybody? I just wanted to defer to someone who may have seen something done like this.
Yes, so I have experienced different processes for selecting advisory boards and commission members, usually by a subcommittee of the council that then makes a recommendation back to the full council. That subcommittee had the authority to interview the applicants. They did not have the authority to actually make the appointments. And so it streamlined the council meetings. I do not recall, I was not involved in any meetings where maybe they were disciplining people, members that had not been showing up. I don't have a recollection about that side of it.
Well, we'll have to figure out a process or something so that we can calm the energy of whatever it may be. If it's an easy, you're three absences, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. But if it's anything beyond that, I think, yeah, we certainly have to lay something down so we can think about that further. I just wanted to kind of go back and mention something that I did learn at the TML thing is that holdovers don't apply to persons who are appointed, only to elected officials. So no appointed commissioner can hold over a term. But we'll allow the the interview committee to keep track of those absences. I would like to include, though, I did notice on the the attendance that it was EDC and P and Z, but I feel like the Board of Adjustment should also be added to that, simply because.
All of the committees are going to be added to it. So you're going to get one for every single committee that's active.
Because the historic committee, I mean, I know many, over the last year, it was hard for them to make.
Yes, and most of those are brand new, but you're going to get a report on every committee.
Yes, okay. So that is what I had. So it'll certainly be a work in pro process, right? I would, my recommendation would be, it's January. Obviously, there was some that had like five absences, four absences, some barely making the market through absences. I'd say it's January. Let's give them an opportunity to continue their term throughout the rest of the year and possibly go to the boards themselves, the chairpersons, and just let them know, hey, you know, we're going to this three absence, you know, we're sticking to the policy. Please consider your absences and so forth. And that way, we can continue to honor their terms and their appointments throughout the rest of the year.
Absolutely.
Making them aware. It's only fair and it's considerate to allow them to adjust their schedules if they had more absences last year.
So Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens, when the couple people from the Planning and Zoning and the not the Planning and Zoning, the EDC that missed like four or five meetings or whatever, I did, in the in the policy you have right now, it does say that the chairman should be talking to those people to let them know that they've missed these meetings and that they need to make sure that they they make the meetings because the policy does say three meetings. So I did go to the chairman at that time and asked the chairman if he could speak to those, the couple people that were at that time over at the three three meetings missed. And so I am hoping that he did that. He did tell me that he did. So that's all I could do was tell the chairman, you know, that it was his responsibility to do that. I spoke to some of them also, the members that were missing meetings. And I said, you know, the policy says that you can't miss more than three meetings, but I'm only the city secretary. I don't have any authority. But I did remind them. But I did let the chairman also know that it was his responsibility according to the policy. And they all received a copy of the policy also. You know, the the when I briefed the the policy, I gave a copy to the chairman. Now, I haven't given them the new committee members anything because you keep telling that you need to change the policy and we're not utilizing the policy the way it is. So to give them something that we're not utilizing didn't seem to make sense at this point.
So I guess just how does council feel about getting an interview committee together and creating something that would be a work in process to help to de-politicize our current interview process? Would, should we consider having a subcommittee on council or just allow form a handful of maybe five people to include or maybe six to include the chairpersons?
We can't have more than.
We can't have more than a quorum.
Okay.
Three.
Three, okay. So it would, okay.
I would, I would recommend maybe two of y'all work on it, maybe three. You get too many hands in the pot, it starts getting very muddy. Start working on some recommendations and maybe like an option A and option B for a couple of these things, like interview committee. Do it this way or do it this way.
Jeff, are you interested in getting together for the interview committee? Because I know you were just talking about the reappointments and you might be like, oh, I was, didn't want to sign on to that. And that's totally fine.
Not necessarily reappointments only, but like the whole process.
The whole process.
Yeah, absolutely. I didn't bring it up as a point to punt off into somebody else. So since I brought it up, you'd be more than willing to step up and serve.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make just one more comment?
Sure.
I should have wedged this in earlier about the business of missing meetings. I was asked after the last council meeting by somebody, is it true that council's wanting to boot everybody off of everything and start over, you know?
No.
I don't know where they got that perception, the word gets around town, and I said, no, 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 but we do want people to take it seriously as a duty that they have agreed to. Once a month, come to your meeting and participate, take it seriously. But now listening to all this, it makes me think, well, maybe I, maybe I'm the one that's a little more ruthless than the rest of you. Because when somebody misses three meetings, that it's only a once a month thing, I think if it was me, I think I would do the honorable thing and say, I better step down from this. Let y'all find somebody else, I'm not serving the community if I keep my name in there just to be a placeholder. And so, I, I think what I'm saying is, I'd be pretty ruthless about letting them go. If the rules say three meetings, well, you're off. What's a new year, give them a fresh start, that's how I look at it.
I mean, we've had members of council before miss three meetings in a row or three meetings cumulatively.
Oh, we did, one time.
We've had members of EDC who served on it for six years that missed like twenty meetings during that time. Like, there's a lot of people who've missed meetings, so I do think that, yes, if you can't make the meetings and it's a consistent issue, then you probably should consider stepping down. But I also think that everyone who volunteers does so with good intent. Nobody's volunteering just to intentionally skip meetings, which is why I brought up communication in the first place. It's our responsibility, we do have a role in it whether we want to or not. For our whole ninety-two dollars a month, we also are responsible for meeting or at least reaching out to our committee appointees.
And talking to them.
And talking to them and kind of figuring out what's going on.
My form of reaching out to them would probably be to say, you're not there tonight, then that's your last meeting.
Well, then.
Well, that's you, that's your one of seven here, buddy.
I've served on several committees, and I can tell you if a council member told me that, I would never volunteer for another committee in my life. That's, to me, kind of.
I said it ruthless.
Yeah, I know, but.
I confess.
I, I'm glad that we're moving forward with something on this.
So, Mr. Mahoney, I'm of the same sentiment, the only problem is we haven't enforced anything till now, so it's kind of hard to lay the hammer down on folks that are beyond the three absences when we haven't done anything in the past. Whereas, to y'all's point, hey, it's twenty twenty-five, hard reset, but going forward, there is a standard and it will be enforced.
Yep.
Then there's no confusion, there's no hard feelings if they miss their meetings now, well, we told you, and this is what's going to happen, we got to move on.
I do think there should be a caveat for excused versus unexcused meetings or last minute.
I agree.
Like, being on maternity leave, it's very difficult to find someone to take care of your.
Well, Mr. Roberts, I mean, he was having surgery, I mean, he had issues that he had to take care of. We excused him and, and we're not looking to kick him off, I mean, I, I agree.
I would have rather been here, I promise.
I know, I, I know.
Mr. Hyde.
Mayor Proton, so the one process that I have experienced that has been effective, number one is you want people to participate, but if you start kicking everybody off, then people don't want to participate. And so, the middle ground that I found has worked in other cities is that there is no such thing as an excused absence. If you have three in a row or three in the twelve-month period of your appointment, then you have to come talk to the city council and tell them what's going on, and then the city council, as the appointing body, can decide for itself whether or not it's justified for them to continue. And nobody wants to be called up in front of the principal. And so, it creates a, a internal discouragement of missing meetings because if I get too many, I got to go explain myself to the prin- in the principal's office. So, that, and that way you're not kicking people off and having to find new people. You're working with those people to make sure that if it is a situation of illness or medical condition, then you may be more lenient than if someone says, I just forgot to set my alarm.
I do like that concept of giving an opportunity for an appeal to come to council.
But I do think that's also why the committee would be a good idea, because you're also streamlining, they come in front of the interview committee, give it, the council can then explain it to everybody else, and it doesn't take up thirty minutes of your meeting having someone explain why they were unable to come to a meeting.
I just want to say thank you, everyone, for having great discussion on this, it was necessary, and I appreciate everybody's input.
And I'd be willing to serve on the, we'll call it a subcommittee or whatever, just.
Wonderful, we can probably create the framework and have them serve on it.
Sounds like a great idea. All right, moving on.
We're just giving direction that these two will get together, bring something before us, and then we'll vote on it.
And we'll move forward from there. All right. Nine M, discussion action on use of the Multi-Event Center, Ms. Simics.
I'm bringing this to the council because if you look at the field, ever since we've, we did a contract or you, the Relentless Soccer people came to you and asked that they be able to utilize the field as the main people to use the, utilize the field. So, at the present time, Relentless Soccer uses it on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And when they have games, they use it on Friday, uh, excuse me, on Saturday and Sunday. So, the only day of the week that it wouldn't be used would be Tuesdays and Fridays. We do have another team, a Cibolo team, that does utilize it on, on Tuesday. So, that field, if you go out there and look at that field, it looks, it's terrible. It is the, it, it has never looked this way since it's been built. It is just terrible. And to get this field back in shape is going to require us to either close the field or either limit the number of days that this field can be rented at this time. And it's not, if you look out there, and it's not just as you look out there, you look at the whole entire field. I mean, it is, Nimitz Park looks much a hundred percent better than Multi-Event Center does. And the Multi-Event Center was the elite field that everybody wanted to use. So, I've had numerous teams that wanted to come out and utilize our field, rent the field, and wanting to pay big dollars for that field, and show them the field and they go, no, never mind. Because it's not a field that anyone wants to play on anymore because it, it looks terrible. Just go out and look at it tonight on your way out, if the lights are on, I don't know if they're using the field tonight, but. You know, and, and even those, even the teams that are using the field are, is complaining about the field itself. And it's, we're not even raising enough money because you reduced the fee to twenty-five dollars an hour, which is nothing, of the YMCA charges more, I believe, on the other fields than what we're cha- charging on this field. And so, it's, it's so inexpensive for anyone to utilize the field, but it's in terrible, terrible shape. And so, my only reason to bring it up is if you want the field to continue the way it look like or it'll have absolutely no grass whatsoever, that's the way it's going to look like in six months. We do have, we had an irrigation problem with it. Some of that had to do with the, with the team that was using it, and they messed with the irrigation system. So, we had a lot of leaks in the field that didn't help it. So, my only purpose is what do you want us to do with this field? You made the contract with Relentless Soccer, you told them they could utilize this field, you know, so what do we do at this point? Do we just continue as we, as it is and let the field just go to pot? You know, it's going to cost you tens of thousands of dollars to repair this, even more than that. Because the way it is right now, it should have been seeded back in October, nothing's been done with it. We even had mowing done when the field was wet, so that even ruined the field a little bit more. So, it just hasn't been taken care of for at least a year. And it shows.
It's the taking care slash the amount of maintenance, but the amount of use.
Amount of use and maintenance.
Turf not being able to recover, so a, a recommendation would be to allow staff to cease the use of the multi-event field so that we can put a plan in place to reestablish the turf to a level that it should be in to ensure that the irrigation system is fully operational as well.
What about our agreement with Relentless?
It's a month, if they fell out of an application just like everyone else.
I understand, but what are we going to?
Well, Ms. Simics was just saying it's a month to month, so we would give them thirty-day notice and then we would go from there. So, we would like a, a motion from council because we're, we're sure you'll be hearing from people and we don't want it in the reverse where I make a decision without your authority and then you're questioning, why did we shut it down? So, we're here before you tonight explaining why it's prudent to shut it down so we can reestablish it.
Well, would they, I mean, they've got the, the lights down at the second field, how does that field look? I don't go that far down there, so I don't know what.
That field's not irrigated, it's just a general purpose field.
Right, but, I mean, they were utilizing that one before they came to utilize this one. Right, they're using both now, but if we put a halt on this, they'd still be able to use that one, correct?
That is rented by the YMCA, so they could go to the YMCA and rent that other field. The only thing they have to come to us for is they have to pay a fee to use the, utilize the restrooms because the restrooms are a part of the Multi-Event Center. The only problem we would have there is, as we've had in the past where they rent the other field, our field is not rented, they're still playing on our field.
So, when, when do we do the last agreement with them? It's been over a year, right?
Rather than a year, it's just, yeah.
Okay, then we need to probably sit down and have a discussion with them about it. A lot of teams that rent out city fields or city parks or whatever, they have a maintenance agreement where they maintain it. And so, maybe they need to start contributing to maintenance or pay a maintenance fee on top of the rental fee. I, I don't want to overcharge them, I do think that what they do is great, I do think the teams are great, they bring a lot of traffic to the city with their tournaments and stuff. But we also have to pay to maintain that field that gets used by the city as a whole, and so we have to be careful with our money and our use of time and funds as well. So, I think it would definitely warrant a discussion with them to see, to let them know, here's our concerns, here's what we're seeing, here's what the costs are to us right now, this is not financially beneficial to us. Here's what the termination clause in the agreement says, we don't want to terminate this, so let's try to find a solution at least temporarily until the end of the spring season.
And they actually don't have a termin- I mean, a termination clause in any con- in the contract. The contract they're using is the same contract as if, if you, Councilwoman Cunningham had a team and you came in tomorrow and want to rent the field. There's, you're signing the same contract as Relentless Soccer does.
Right.
A contract without a term is terminable at will. And so, that, that would be the terminable portion. What I don't hear anyone saying is that we know what it costs annually to keep this field preeminent, which is what you want. I think that, that once we have that number, then you have a reason, reasonable way to, to base what the value is of a maintenance agreement or what the value of your rental should be in order to cover the cost of the field. That's my recommendation.
To get an amount would probably be a, a big stretch because of the amount of use it's getting. It, that, that field's just not built for this. I mean, it's, it's unnatural, and we have real hot summers that stress it. And it's just, it's not a seven-day-a-week venue.
So, we, we would, I would be working with David Howard, your park superintendent, who was here earlier tonight. Under Huggins, Mr. Huggins' supervision, they would formulate that plan of action, what the cost would be to reestablish it and to ensure that our ongoing maintenance maintains it. So, we don't have those figures, but we will bring that back once we have it.
I'd ask them to look at Veterans Park to utilize the field up there. I mean, they, they've got the rented lamps down here, they could rent lamps and place them up there on that one as well.
Veterans Park would require a lot of, a lot of.
I understand, but it's, it's the same as this right now.
Oh, yeah, but that's where our parks department needs to actually step up and take care of this stuff.
Mayor, Proton, and council, in the very near future, you will have a presentation on all existing parks and the priorities for our approved funding to improve and maintain those parks. So, this is not related to that, but yet it is related to that, so we'll be sure to cover the MECC in that presentation as well.
And I've talked to David Howard about the MECC, and he understands too that there's not much they can do with the maintenance of it when it's used every single day. You know, so it's really hard for his guys to get out there and do anything with it. And then come five o'clock or four, fourth, four o'clock, sometimes there's kids out in that field, whatever they did on that field that day. It, it was, it's almost.
Grass doesn't grow overnight.
Yeah, it doesn't grow overnight. I mean, so it's, it's been very hard, especially the last year. We've utilized that field before and it was, we normally didn't ever let the field get utilized more than four days a week. And it kept, we rented it four days a week and the field kept, I mean, it was in great shape until, until maybe eighteen months ago, a year ago. And then, once we started with going six, seven days a week, this is what happened. You can look at it during the daytime and see what it looks like.
Councilwoman Mahoney?
Well, I guess I'm just reiterating that point, but I wanted to say that letting it rest every other day to me is the solution. No amount of money or agreements or maintenance and all that is going to restore it right now. I was, due to my children, I was deeply involved in soccer environment up in Plano for fifteen years. And we had a couple of really beautiful parks that the league had rented from the city, much like this model here. And the, the city sometimes said, eh, you're shut down for every other day or something for a few weeks because of conditions. And nature had a chance to make a comeback. That's what we need over here, I think, is to skip every other day or something.
Very good point.
I guess we need to make a motion on this, right?
Yep, let's make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for city staff to bring back an analysis of current expenses to the utilization of the field and as well as the cost of repair. We were.
I'd also like a, a plan as to how we're going to move forward.
Thank you.
Do, do we want to include in the motion that we pause the field use?
And furthermore, pause the usage of the field.
Has, has the team been notified that we're even discussing this tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor, Mayor Proton and council, so I know that Ms. Simics is writing it down, I'm, I'm also just confirming so. The motion, which hasn't been seconded yet because we're clarifying it, is to pause the use of the MECC field to allow the city to reestablish the turf, a plan to move forward. And was there a third component there? And the cost.
The cost of repair and the current expenses.
Can I, can I clarify, the pause is going to be after the thirty-day notice or we pause it immediately? After thirty days, perfect.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
All right. All right, nine M, discussion presentation providing an update on bond proposition A, the animal shelter, and bond proposition B, the public safety facility, Mr. Huggins.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Proton, and council. Just wanted to give you a quick update on propositions A and B that the voters approved back in November regarding the animal shelter and public safety facility. back in November regarding the animal shelter and public safety facility. So, I know Joe Cobble was working on putting it up there. Y'all have, should have a packet with the presentation in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, again, we're gonna talk about where we're at with proposition A, the animal shelter, proposition B, the public safety facility. So, tonight, we're just looking for a little feedback from council. Does council support the release of a request for qualifications? Good. For architectural services for the design of the animal shelter on February 3rd and does council support the release of an intent to bid for construction services for the public safety facility in October? We're gonna start with the animal shelter. So, the voters overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly approved proposition A with a sixty-four point nine, seven percent of the voters voting for proposition A and only thirty-five point oh three voting against, which is a, you know, better than two to one margin for approval of the prop, the animal shelter proposition. So, that was great. They approved nine million dollars for this project and so we're gonna put out an intent to bid, I mean, excuse me, RFQ for design services for the animal shelter, hopefully next week, February 3rd. There's some total costs on that slide for project cost. When we talk about building requirements, we actually went to a architectural firm, Quorum Architects, back in FY twenty-three to do a needs assessment on the animal shelter to determine if we really needed an animal shelter upgrade and if, if so, what were we looking at with that new building? And so, we looked at some minimum standards and requirements based on the Texas Administrative Code related to animal shelters and some of the things they looked at were industry standards for the number of kennels for dogs and cats and then, you know, going forward, what would that number need to be based on historic records, intakes and outcomes and city's population growth, adequate workspace for, for employees, adequate, adequate space for, you know, yard space for dogs runs, cat housing room, visitor areas, and as y'all all are aware, our current facility doesn't really have a lot of space for any of those things. You know, then we looked at what were the best practices for animal shelters in the state of Texas, you know, evaluating things like workflow and workload demands of our staff as well as the animals at our facility. So, building requirements, again, based on what we got in the needs assessment from Quorum, they laid out a list of stuff that they would recommend that we have and I'm not gonna go through the whole list, y'all have it there, but it's, it talks about kennel space for dogs and cats, quarantine locations, dog, cat isolation chambers, play areas, a reception area, workspace for employees, food preparation areas, laundry, saliport, medical area, and so on and so forth. And so, fiscal impact in FY twenty-five, in FY twenty-five, we want to look at doing the construction, the architectural construction design for this new facility and the funding that we have in that, for that would be about around eight hundred sixty-four thousand dollars for this year's construction drawings. Initially, we had talked about, you know, do we want to rebuild in the current location where the, the animal shelter is now? Do we want to move to another location? And, and one of the recommendations that we had that y'all actually supported was going down in the area where the sports fields are at, over here off Shafer Road and Main Street and looking at that facility, let's see if I can zoom through this real quick. There we go. Thank you, Jacobo. Looking at that, that property that we have over there and what we're looking to put in that location, based on the flows along the drainage channel there, the creek, town creek there, one of the things that really needed to take into consideration was if we put it there by that, that red square, which is the farmhouse, when I talked to Mr. Fuze and the drainage folks, they said that even somewhat minor flooding events, that water comes almost all the way up to that, that farmhouse. And if we put that facility down there, that, that really puts that facility in danger. So, we looked at maybe moving it over to Hagerfield Road and that big, open spot we have on Hagerfield Road. It's a large lot. It makes more sense to leave this, the space on the west side of the farmhouse for, for ball fields. We just talked earlier tonight about the need for more fields in our, in our area and if we could utilize that space in the, in the yellow there off of Hagerfield Road, it's a big, it's a big space, there's a lot of room between that location and the houses on the left and right of that, that building and, you know, if noise is a consideration, we can look at when we actually design this facility, you know, putting up sound barriers, sound walls, like we talked about along eleven oh three, on the fronts and sides of that to push the sound back toward the creek so that we really won't interfere with the residents that live along Hagerfield Road. So, that's our recommendation on relocating that to the Hagerfield Road area.
Would we be able to have exits on both Shafer and Hagerfield?
Good question. We can look at that. I mean, we own that property that goes out on Shafer Road there, so there's a possibility to have a ingress.
Yeah, they just have that trailer and they have big bulky trucks and stuff that I just think that might be easier to have two exits, but.
It's possible, but that, that area is, it's, it's a really large lot, so I think we can, we can have multiple driveways coming in and out and I think the design we looked at even with Quorum was to have multiple driveways coming in that facility, so ingress and ingress, I do not think are gonna be an issue. So, we propose that we're gonna do.
Well, to, to that question, I, I know that Ms. Cunningham has been very big proponent of this. We mentioned it off of Shafer Road, off of Shafer Road is what we've mentioned.
Yes, sir.
And even on our, our ballot, we put Shafer Road, not Hagerfield Road.
So, I would make the suggestion that we make an entrance off of Shafer Road. Okay? Yes, sir.
Okay? I mean, our ballot stated off Shafer Road, not Hagerfield, so.
Should be easy enough to do.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So, we're gonna release the RFQ on the 3rd. There's a schedule there. It'll be closing on March 3rd. We'll review the submittals and we're gonna come back to council with hopefully awarded contract in May on this project. So, now we'll talk about the public safety facility real quick. Again, this was overwhelmingly supported by the voters of Siblo, passed at sixty-three to thirty-six percent back in November. They provoked, they approved seventeen, a little over seventeen million dollars for this project. We hired Icon Architects back in FY twenty-four to design the building and a lot of the things we required for this building are listed there. You know, we brought this to council and told them we had the good, better and best options, if y'all recall, when we talked about this project and really what we needed for a fire station, but with the addition of some room for a police substation in this. So, these are some of the requirements that we had in that, that design for this building. Again, this is just a continuation of some of those things we put in there for the facility for fire and, and PD as well as the large training facility out back. You know, based a lot, based on the location of this facility along Bolton Road, we are gonna have to bring a wastewater line down to that facility because there's not currently a wastewater line that runs to that piece of property that the city owns. So, that's going to coincide with the construction of this building, is the construction of that wastewater line to this public safety facility.
Would.
Mr. Hicks?
Would it be beneficial to look at a septic system on there for the time being since we're already looking at putting a lift station at the end of Bolton Road down the street from this to go up and underneath Siblo Creek to connect?
Yes, sir.
Instead of trying to run a million dollars to go back up towards Eishen for?
Yeah, well, that, one of the things that we did in our GBSUD settlement agreement was to discuss us connecting to that line going up to that lift station that they already have in place up there, not the lift station, but the treatment facility.
Well, wouldn't we need to put a lift station there to pump it?
No.
Because you're going up and over.
From what I understand, there's enough room there to do a gravity line back to the Eishen line that's in place right now.
I've driven that many, 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 many a times and that comes from Eishen goes down. I don't know how you're gonna get a gravity line, but okay. That's just my two cents.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. We'll definitely make sure that that's a feasible solution when we're looking at this water, excuse me, wastewater line. Based on the design that we have from Icon on this property, the city may need to acquire a small segment of, of land next for the, the neighboring property to align the driveway with Stolti Road so that we can at some point in time put a traffic light there, which will facilitate getting the fire trucks in and out of the property safer and easier and then possibly do a little more land acquisition on the south side of the property going out to Interstate ten frontage road. Right now, we have a fifteen foot easement going out. They recommended a twenty-five foot easement to make a wider driveway coming in and off, in and out of that back section of the property there. Right now, the, with the reconstruction of I-ten frontage road, by Tech dot, they put a drainage inlet right where our driveway is at. So, we may need to move that, that easement over a little bit to accommodate that, that inlet as well. So, we're doing some survey work to see what the requirement would be on that land acquisition. So, that's it for this presentation, however, we do have a, a short video that we wanted to show that we received from Icon with a kind of like a five, a fly through of the property and the building itself, so you can kind of see what it looks like. Let me pull that up for you real quick and I'll let Mr. Narrator Chief Tonkosso walk you through it.
All right, as a Mayor, Pro Temp and Council, as you see this fly over here, that's the, the north side of the building, that, that's the front side that faces Bolton Road. And this is the west side as it goes around. And this is the area where the fire trucks would go into the fire station and then this is the, the southern part of the fire station. And one thing there, the design that was requested is that have signage on the south end so people on I-ten could look north and see that it's a Siblo facility, excuse me, and that's where it has a Siblo Fire Station number four on that end. Doing pushups there?
That's.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's me right there. So, this side, this is the east side of the fire station, this is where the fire apparatuses will be exiting. Those are multi-fold doors, the, on the, on the west side are roll up, these are multi-fold, they're like bifold doors.
They make for a quicker exit.
Quicker exit, yes.
Yeah. There's another moonwalker right there.
As we're going into the front lobby here. And of course, as soon as you go into the front lobby there, we're reviewing the training room in the EOC. And this area can be divided into two separate rooms as well, a divider right in the middle. And as we exit here, we also have a EMS exam room with police officer offices as well. The police department will have offices that they could utilize so they can do paperwork.
That's the substation section.
Yeah. This long corridor would lead you into the dayroom and this is shared with the police and fire and EMS. Those are pantries there on the side there that will, for each shift and of course for Then you, as you exit in this area, this area is the sleeping quarters for fire and police.
Well, we will be taking a nap, so.
And then this goes out into the bay area where the fire trucks are stored and that's facing towards the east.
Is it catwalk area for your training, right?
And then we have different storage areas and this one is particular to our personal protective equipment where it's stored. And then this one is the weight room facility that the police, fire and EMS personnel will be utilizing throughout the day. He's still, still doing pushups. And that whole facility is roughly a little over fifteen thousand square foot.
You gotta give us some time to work on that. Okay, that's it. Any questions? All right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're good with the RFQs and?
Very good, yeah. I think we're all good.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all. All right, nine oh, discussion from council members who have attended seminars, events or meetings. Mr. Hicks?
Attended TML, not Friday, but the Friday before, a lot of good information that was given out at that meeting, AAMPL meeting last week on a study. Today, I was at Commissioner's Court, that's about all I've got.
So, I attended a meeting at SHRTS that was a TML training on the eighty-ninth legislature that's talking about all the bills when not, whatnot that are gonna be going in front of our Congress in Texas. And then, on the seventeenth, I began corresponding with Hillary Hicklin's office. She's our House Representative in District fifty-five and she has a bill that she introduced in November of twenty-fourth, it's House Bill thirteen oh nine, which is to help subsidize the cities that have a significant amount of disabled veteran, hundred percent disabled vets. So, hopefully, we can get some of that money back into the budget in Siblo if the, that does pass in Texas. And then, I completed my webinar for newly elected officials through TML and then on the twenty-fourth, I had a tour of the city facilities with Public Works and with the police department, Mr. Reed and Mr. Huggins, and that was pretty informative. I didn't realize some of the stuff that Public Works actually does and there's some of the initiatives that the PD wants to try to get in place. And then I have my new council training thing on February 3rd and I think I'm done for a day or so.
All right, so Ms. Allison Haidworth, I think she sent us out an email regarding the eighty-ninth legislature webinar held at the SHRTS chamber, so that was very informative of, I think they said somewhere between eleven to twelve thousand bills that are supposed to be looked at this year, so that's a lot. I know that they had discussed about getting some elected officials together, maybe possibly busing them, busing us to, you know, the Capitol and really advocating for, you know, municipalities and so that was very informative. Also, had a really great time at another TML training in San Antonio, ethics and key legal requirements for elected officials. It covered a lot of things I has mentioned earlier, just conflict of interests, incompatibility, just different things, ethically, what we should be doing, not accepting bribes, you know, all of those things, so it was very informative. Here's a, you go thick thing if you want to take a look at it, but it was very, it was very good. Eight-thirty to about three-thirty is how long it was, so if y'all haven't done something like that, it, it'd be worth going to. Let's see, also, I know that I wrote it in the back of here. I know that I wrote it in the back of here. Oh, was able to attend our ribbon cutting last week for just a closet self-storage. It was incredible how much the owner of that facility, before they even broke ground, how much they already contributed back to the community. And they just continue to look forward, just being a presence within our community and continuing to pour, giving to like the Booster Club and any other needs that we have. So I thought that was really neat that they already had invested before they even broke down. So that was really cool.
We had animal advisory last night. Those meetings are always super, super quick. They're just kind of a state requirement that we meet. I think it was like ten minutes, maybe. It's very fast. But we discussed some of the needs for the animal shelter. They have had decreased hours on their reports that have been in our packets for volunteers. And I asked about that. She said, right now, they don't have the space because they don't have the office, they don't have anywhere else, and it's cold outside, and so there's not really any room for volunteers. They usually see an uptick during breaks, like spring break and summertime. So if you want to volunteer at the shelter, they're going to be doing a volunteer class pretty soon. She said there's a lot of applicants. So they're gonna be doing another, like, orientation class here pretty soon for that. The Guadalupe County MLK Committee, they used to just be Seguin Area MLK Committee, but they expanded to the county this year, recently this year or last year. And I spoke at the banquet last week. That was nice. Norma was there, too. She kind of got it sprung on her. Thanks for reminding me, yes. I think you were supposed to speak at the march, and she showed up at the banquet, and they're like, oh, surprised you're speaking at the banquet instead because the march got canceled due to weather. So there were a lot of really good speakers there. One of our pastors from Cibolo spoke as well. We had a huge Cibolo presence, which was nice considering this is the first time that it expanded to the county. So if you have the chance to go next year, it was really good. And then on the nineteenth, I volunteered overnight at a warming center in San Antonio. We had icy weather, and when there's icy weather, we have a lot of people in our community, not necessarily in Cibolo, who are homeless, full-on homeless. We have a lot of people who are in substandard or unweatherized housing. And I know there was a call that I received for a, an animal case where there was no front door, there were no windows, and one of the walls was just a tarp. And that's in our city. That's not, we think of Cibolo as having a lot of new build housing or like mid-two thousands housing. There's a lot of older homes. There's a lot of mobile homes. There's a lot of houses that are being held together with some tape and some prayers. And when we have weather like that, we need to really consider the resources we have available. In all of Guadalupe County, the only warming station was at the Seguin Library, and it was only during the day. And so I think that that's something that we should look at in the future is working with the Guadalupe County Emergency Management and whether it's Noble, the Noble Center, when we acquire that, that we offer to allow whoever to organize the staffing, the volunteer staffing for a warming center. We need to have something in place. I don't know what happened during the snowmageddon in twenty-twenty-one, what, what the city did, if anything, at that time. But it's something that we should look into. Lots of people die from exposure, get really hurt or injured from that. That's it. Yeah.
So the only thing, I got to attend to the Bob Mills grand opening. Yes, Councilwoman Cunningham was there. Although not in Cibolo, I am excited about another furniture store to help drive more furniture shoppers to the area since we do have living spaces across the street. Other than that, I am looking forward to my newcomer orientation.
And you didn't mention it, neither did Mahoney, but the Tri-County Chamber, something or other mixer, was that same night, and I saw y'all there.
Yes.
Go team.
All right. Nine P, discussion on items city council would like to see on future agendas. Does anybody have anything, or do they want to send their request to?
Just the little, the little mention of PIA's earlier today. If we could get a list of, and I think this was requested maybe last year or year before, a list of the PIA's that we have currently and what the status is on them. The one for Reserve at Buffalo Crossing seems to be moving incredibly slowly. They are now in year, mid of, middle of year seven, if not year eight, at this point of their ten-year contract to have that road completed. And so I'm a little concerned that we're going to end up with nothing built. And then a lot of PIA's happened before any of us were ever on council, just kind of knowing what they are, what they were for, what the status is of them, and when they should be completed by, per the contract. Just so we're staying on top of that would be helpful.
I'd also like to, now that we have more information regarding the candlesticks on Green Valley Road and restriping and so forth, I'd like to bring that, that, that next time just as well. And also, Katie, I'm glad that you mentioned about the warming centers because I had requested that to be on this agenda, because I think we're tracking the same way that I was thinking about the Noble Center just as well. I was able to speak to a councilperson from Shirts, asking them, have y'all ever done your civic center into a warming center or possibly the library? And they mentioned we did do it during snowmageddon. We only had one family show up. But that's not to say that your city is any different. I noticed that Seguin opened up their public school, a, a public library. So I thought it'd be worth discussing how much would that cost? Could we bring in volunteers to manage it? It's right around the corner from the fire station. Could a firefighter come or some staff, just looking at that whole picture to see if we can possibly do something to just, because to your point, we do have elderly, we do have, you know, parent-being homes, we, other homes that are not, well, I'm just saying, there's a track that comes through, you know. I love parent-being homes, actually. They're beautiful. And so anyway, so she said Joel would be the first one there. That's what we were laughing about. Sorry about that. So, but yes, we don't know the exact, all the needs from our residents, but it would be nice to give that, have that available, so we can discuss that further next time.
All right. Nine Q, discussion on the review and confirmation of all upcoming special meetings and workshops and scheduling the time, date, and place of additional special meetings or workshops, Ms. Simmons.
The only thing I'd like to add, the ethics training that was scheduled for the the twenty-first of January, which was canceled because of the weather conditions that we had, is being rescheduled for the twenty-seventh of February. It's a Thursday at six-thirty in the evening. So we will have, still have the one on the eighth of February, which is Saturday, a Saturday at nine-thirty in the morning, and then we'll have the one on the twenty-seventh on a Thursday at six-thirty. This is going out to all the committees and commissions by tomorrow morning. Some of them already have it. And it'll be populated on your calendars, and you can go to either one or the other. But I will send it out for both dates, and you can just choose whichever one you want to go to.
All right. All right. Ten A, approval, disapproval of ordinance providing for the first budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
Good evening, council. The ordinance for your consideration tonight is for the first budget amendment of fiscal year twenty-five. The amendment impacts fifteen funds of the organization. A description of each amendment is included in the staff report and footnoted at the bottom of each page in Exhibit A. We'll go through these pages for the, starting with the general fund, which is page one of Exhibit A. Footnote A is for one hundred and twelve thousand for purchase orders for projects or other one-time costs for the prior year that were not fulfilled. Footnote B details the allocation of compensation adjustments. Public safety and public works market adjustments were budgeted in non-departmental, and this amendment allocates it across the relevant departments. One hundred and fifty-two thousand is for compensation adjustments for all employees that were not brought to market. Of that amount, approximately eighty-two thousand is in excess of what was available in the budget, and we're seeking that increase with this amendment. Footnote C is the allocation of insurance proceeds of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand received in twenty-twenty-four for the purchase of a replacement fire apparatus in twenty-twenty-five, and council has approved that fire apparatus. Footnote D is a decrease in contractual costs of two hundred and eighty thousand that was referenced earlier in the meeting for the Shirts Dispatch Services ILA by the amount authorized to be funded by ARPA. Footnote E is an increase in contractual costs of thirty thousand in code enforcement for the abatement of property. Footnote F in the general fund is an increase in election costs of forty-three thousand two fifty in the city secretary budget for the increased cost for election services by Guadalupe County. The total increase to the general fund is approximately seven hundred and forty-six thousand and is covered by an increase in beginning fund balance from positive budgetary variances in fiscal year twenty-four. Estimated ending fund balance of five point nine million shown on the schedule is approximately thirty percent of recurring expenditures. And recurring expenditures does not include one-time costs or costs borne by other funds. That's the longest one. Page two of Exhibit A is the Development Services Fund. Footnote B allocates the compensation adjustment and decreases the budget by, by thirty-five hundred dollars. Footnote G adds two thousand in training costs for P and Z board members that was inadvertently excluded from the budget. Footnote H adds twenty thousand in legal services for costs not paid by applicants, which also was inadvertently excluded from the budget. In total, Development Services budget increases by eighteen point five thousand. For the utility fund on the next page, and I won't go into that, this much detail on all of them, but the operating funds are one you do have a good picture of. For the utility fund, footnote A is seventeen thousand for purchase orders for projects for one-time costs. These are like engineering and studies that were ongoing and crossed fiscal years. Footnote B details the allocation of compensation adjustments. Compensation adjustments were budgeted in non-departmental for an estimated seventy thousand. Public Works market adjustments and adjustments for other employees that were not brought to market actually totaled one hundred and thirty-six thousand. This was brought to council in December. The approximate sixty-six thousand in excess of what was available is being requested in this amendment. Footnote I is for the cost above the amount budgeted for the sanitary sewer master plan by one hundred and three thousand, which was approved by city council at the last meeting. And footnote J is for the cost of a consultant that will work with us on water and wastewater projects that the city manager, I know, has discussed with, with city council. The total increase to the utility fund is approximately two hundred and twenty-six thousand and is funded by excess fund balance, including an increase to the beginning fund balance from positive, positive budgetary variances in fiscal year twenty-four. The estimated ending balance of eight point two million is approximately forty-two percent of recurring expenditures. For the drainage fund on the next page, we're on page four. Footnote A, again, is for purchase orders that were for projects or one-time costs that weren't fulfilled in FY twenty-four. Footnote B, again, details the allocation of compensation adjustments. The, the amount that is over the amount that we estimated at budget time in August is approximately thirty-three thousand, and we're requesting that increase in the drainage fund. So the total increase to the drainage fund is approximately thirty-five thousand and is funded again by excess fund balance, an increase to the beginning fund balance from positive budgetary variances in the prior year. The estimated ending balance of four hundred and eighty-five thousand is approximately thirty-two, thirty-two percent of recurring expenditures. For the Economic Development Fund, footnote A is for ten thousand dollars for purchase orders for, for a grant, actually, that was approved in fiscal year twenty-four and carries over to fiscal year twenty-five. Footnote K is for a roll forward of a payment on a Chapter Three eighty incentive agreement that's expected to be completed in FY twenty-five. Footnote L is for carry forward of funding for the downtown master plan that was, that was considered by city council tonight. The funding was originally budgeted in FY twenty-four, and we're moving that funding over to FY twenty-five. The total increase to the EDC budget is six hundred and twenty thousand. Again, it's funded by an increase to the beginning fund balance from positive budgetary variances in the prior year. So the hundred and sixty thousand was saved, for example, in FY twenty-four and is, and is available to be carried forward. The EDC fund does not have a fund balance requirement. The Grants Fund on page six is, includes eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand for purchase orders that are being rolled forward, and these are for ongoing projects that are being funded with ARPA funds. And footnote M is to roll forward the unobligated funds that council then obligated at the December tenth meeting. Footnote N is actually a zero-balance adjustment to recognize revenue and the matching expense for the GVC power grant that council approved also in the December meeting. And in the next eight pages, the eight funds, the Police Forfeiture Fund, the Child Safety Fund, Street Maintenance Fund, Impact Fee Funds, and Parkland Fees, include amendments to the budget for purchase orders that were approved in FY twenty-four but not completed. And additionally, the four Impact Fee Funds were also requesting an increase in professional services related to the Impact Fee Study that council approved at the last council meeting. The last page, page fifteen of Exhibit A, is the Public Facility Corporation budget, and we're requesting an increase to contractual services for purchase orders for one-time costs, which is the RMS system, the police RMS system. And footnote P is a request to roll forward remaining funds not authorized, remaining funds authorized by city council but not spent on the acquisition of real estate. So I know that was a lot. If there are any questions on any particular item, any of those footnotes, I can answer any questions?
I'm sorry, I just have a few. So on the purchase of fire apparatus approved by city council with money from insurance, and then it just says twenty-twenty-five bond funding. What bond funding is that?
That is the twenty-twenty-five COs that are in the process of being issued. They'll be issued in February with proceeds received in March. Chief Troncoso brought that to you, I believe, at the last meeting
Okay.
to allocate, reallocate that funding.
For some reason, I was thinking it had to do with the public safety facility, and I was like, that doesn't make sense. So, okay, thank you for clarifying. For D, the allocation of a portion of the increase of the Shirts ILA to ARPA funds, did that also come to us?
Yes, at the December tenth meeting when we discussed how to obligate the, the remaining ARPA funds.
Got it. The additional funding for legal costs related to development not covered by applicants, what is that twenty thousand for? What legal services are not covered by applicants? I thought it was self-sustaining.
I think that's a question for Mr. Reed.
I'll do my best, Vasquez is in the, is going towards DFW.
By Kelsey Lee prior to her leaving and?
So this involves when we have legal services to support the department that aren't applicable or derived from an applicant. So if we need to develop a template for a public improvement agreement that is contemporary rather than a ten-year-old template, we don't want to charge an applicant for developing the template, which we're gonna use for multiple projects. That is the basis for, and that's just an example, that's not the sole reason. That would be an example of why the land use or the land, the Development Services Fund would need an additional twenty thousand for legal services. Remember, those are still paid for by the revenue that comes in the door for development, but that would be an example, Ms. Cunningham, of legal services that aren't covered by applicants.
Okay, would that be not covered under our twenty-one hundred hours of flat fee service?
And the Development Services Fund?
Because it's just something that's for the city to use long-term?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah. So the, excuse me. So the, the example that Mr. Regis used is not something that we would ordinarily charge with regards to this type of, of use. Because the city has an obligation to only charge those costs which they are incurred, because if you charge more than that, it's an unconstitutional tax. The funds that are recovered from the individuals who are required to pay those costs just didn't pay them, is what I understood. And I don't have any problem for this fiscal year to waive any of those costs because the city never recovered them. And so the, I don't, I thought it was like two thousand dollars, not twenty, but my offer stays the same. So if, if a So if, for instance, there was a potential use on a property that had easements related to the adjacent property that had to be reviewed and evaluated for the planning staff so that they could go forward with that applicant's application, that would be something the applicant would be charged for, for whatever time that we spent on that time and that you would recover. That was separate from our allocation, because that's services that we're providing through the planning process that the private people are paying, not that the city. So if the city is paying this money, I don't want it.
Okay, so that was a lot of scattered thoughts. So applicants failed to pay their full legal amount. There was a portion left over, I understand that.
Yep.
I understand that legal services are provided and the fees collected from the applicants pay for those legal services. Got it, check, check. But those are just a portion allocated to that. So the funds received from applicants go into a separate account, or like a general fund or whatever utility fund, it comes in as revenue, and then the portion of time allocated gets paid out of that. So if I have five different funds and I work five hours here, ten hours here, five hours here, ten hours here, then the portion that gets paid for that total amount worked, that quarterly amount for our flat fee.
Yes.
Whatever it is, five percent should, or whatever, that portion should come from here, this portion should come from here, this portion should come from here, this portion should come from here. So I get that, and I get that these people aren't paying the fees, so we don't have the revenue coming in. But it's still included under our flat fee, correct? Because these are not outside services. If these are not outside services, do we receive invoices for those?
Yes, you can get monthly reports of the amount of time that was supported.
Okay, then I will send a separate request for that, because I have requested invoices, and none of those were included in those invoices that I received. So I would like to know the number of hours worked on that and the amount that we're paying towards that, because...
I'm sorry, they were originally supposed to be tracked by the Director of Planning and Economic Development. When that wasn't taking place, we assumed that obligation and were sending in monthly spreadsheets that showed the time and the project that was used.
Okay, so any money that the city pays, we should have an accounting of what we're paying for.
That's exactly what that is.
Perfect, that's great, that we have a spreadsheet. But when I requested invoices to see where the breakdown of time was and where the money was coming, I got invoices for all of the special projects. I did not receive any information for the breakdown of the twenty-one hundred hours until your beautifully worded email today, where I did get that breakdown. But I did not receive this. So this seems like another separate, I hate to use special project, because it's really not, it's on planning, planning project that is separate from the twenty-one hundred hours. It's separate from these special projects that do come invoiced with invoice numbers and breakdowns. So it's separately billed with a spreadsheet, correct?
I think when he's referring to the spreadsheet, it's a spreadsheet of time, but probably not dollars, because it's not an invoice, and I've never seen, I've never seen that spreadsheet.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to, I'm just, I'm not understanding how we're paying for this.
Specifically discusses it, where we have set a flat rate of two-seventy-five an hour, that they, what you are supposed to pay for that. But those funds, if you look at the agreement, say that those don't come back to me, they go to you to supplement or, not really supplement, but subsidize, subsidize those costs that are prepared to the city.
If I could just add, so the time spent on development applications is covered under the flat fee, but so that we can bill the applicants, and the applicants can pay, just like Mr. Otto sitting on the other side, also provides invoicing on every project. We bill those to the applicants as well. That money that is received to pay for Mr. Otto covers our invoices back to him. The payments back to the city that cover the city attorney's work on it stays with the city because we have a flat fee arrangement. And so this is our first year with the Development Services Fund. And up until October one of twenty-twenty-four, all of that money just flowed right back into the general fund, so there wasn't a separate accounting. But because in this year you created a new enterprise fund, the Development Services Fund, when we receive payment for city attorney services on development applications, Ana Miranda is keeping track of that based upon the planning department's reports of, here's how much time was spent on development, application A, B, C, D, and that helps fund the Development Services Fund.
Okay.
Or Ana Miranda should be.
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is that we are charging applicants two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour for legal services. The applicants are not writing a check to each individual consultant who helps with the planning. They're not writing a check to Hyde, they're not writing a check to Otto, they're writing a check to the City of Siblo. The City of Siblo retains those fees and rolls that two hundred and seventy-five dollars into our flat fee that we are paying Hyde, or he gets paid, you get paid, the amount.
He doesn't get paid. That money, even though it's rolling into the Development Services Fund, can help pay for that flat fee of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, yes. Again, we're in the first year of the Development Services Fund.
Great.
And so whereas in FY twenty-four, it all flowed into the general fund.
I got it, I understand that. So you're saying that it's, you're saying that it's flowing into this development fund, and it's being used to contribute towards the flat fee. Mr. Hyde has said that these hours spent on this are not a part of that twenty-one hundred hours. So in the thirty-eight, three thousand eight hundred and fifteen hours that were billed under the twenty-one hundred hours in the flat fee, were the hours that were allocated towards, whatever this is, the two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour for people, were those hours included in that thirty-eight fifteen?
Yes.
They are?
They are.
Okay.
And in the back of the engagement agreement, so your prior lawyers before this used to charge that cost, and then the city would pay that money to them. And under our flat fee agreement, it specifically says that this is the amount that you should charge your public, your citizens, which is a reasonable fee for land use, legal services. And then it says that while you've had this being paid to your prior lawyers, it says, I don't want it. It says, I waive that, and I contribute that to the city under our flat fee agreement. So that's why you don't get an invoice. It's a spreadsheet so that they know how much time to charge against the accounts of the citizens who have put in six hundred dollars or whatever it is to cover their costs.
I think this does raise another separate issue. I do understand what you're saying now, but if we're charging people six, two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, and it's been said multiple times that your rate breaks down to one hundred and sixty an hour or less, then we're overcharging people by over a hundred dollars an hour on their planning reviews.
That's not at all, I mean, the allocation of those funds depends on the type of work we do, and that's also explained in our engagement, is that, you know, the expertise necessary, if I'm doing economic development, that cost could be much, much more, I mean, the litigation cost, they are starting to propose, was three hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for my time, as an example.
Correct, and I understand that, but you also mentioned...
So the two-seventy-five is less than what it, what it would normally charge an individual for land use-related?
Right, but you also said earlier that the city cannot charge more than what it's paying. So if we're paying one sixty, we're not doing a one-to-one ratio. So I'm going to look into this further.
I'm allocating that two hundred and seventy-five dollars of land use work towards the flat fee budget, because that's how you're getting that allocated.
And Ms. Cunningham and counsel, I can provide you an update by asking Rick Vasquez, who's only a month in, so he doesn't have the history, to work with Aaron to provide a summary of how this is working, and then if you want to bring this back on a council agenda, be happy to do that.
No, thank you for the clarification on that. I do have concerns about this. I think that if people saw that they're being charged two-seventy-five an hour, whether it should be three-twenty-five, whether it should be a thousand dollars an hour, whatever, and the city is only paying one hundred and sixty, it looks like we're pocketing the rest. And I'm not sure how comfortable I am with that, so I will continue to look into that. My last question on this one is the additional cost for consultant for water and wastewater issues. What are these water and wastewater issues, and what consultant?
Ms. Cunningham, I'd like to answer that one. So what the plan is, is that with the retirement of Tim Fuess, we lost extreme amount of institutional knowledge as well as knowledge around water and wastewater utilities. So the plan is to enter into a consulting agreement with Tim Fuess to provide the following services. Mr. Fuess has served on our Canyon Regional Water Authority Board as a representative of the city. For him to continue to fulfill that commitment, he would be a consultant for the city, representing the city on the Canyon Regional Water Authority. Also, he would represent the City of Siblo at the Siblo Valley Local Government Corporation Board meetings, which he had been doing previously and as asked to do in the future. He'd provide, and everything else is providing, as he would at those two boards, provide guidance and recommendations to the city manager's office on the City of Siblo water resources and possible future water availability within our region. Counsel, remember, we've done some executive sessions on what those options are for the city. Mr. Fuess has that knowledge and expertise to continue to help provide recommendations on how we can best find water resources to meet our growing water demands. In addition, provide guidance and recommendation to the city manager's office, as well as city engineering consultants developing the Siblo South Wastewater Master Plan. Again, Mr. Fuess's understanding of our wastewater system and the needs in that south area would be utilized in that process. Also, related to the Siblo Impact Fee Update Project, Mr. Fuess was on both of the last two impact fee updates, and we need to ensure we have continuity of what the impact fees are covering going forward, so he would be part of technical meetings with our consultant to ensure that we're not overlooking any of the details in our system for wastewater. And then the Venado West Sanitary Sewer Trunk Main Project, ensuring that we're covering the details that need to be carried forward in the Venado West Sanitary Sewer Trunk Main Project. Also, the solid waste services for the City of Siblo, as asked, he would sit in on meetings, technical meetings with our consultant as we're continuing to evaluate the new franchise arrangement with a future vendor. And then regulatory and legislative matters related to future water sources and water reserve capacity requirements. It's Mr. Fuess who can write and recommend how we can advocate at the Texas Legislature to reduce TCEQ's water requirements and to hopefully build, as we have at the CRWA meetings, build a coalition of cities that recognize that the current requirement for water reserves are onerous on cities, particularly the smaller cities like Siblo and smaller than us. So those are, in general, the scope of work that I would like Mr. Fuess to conduct as a consultant for the city, and that would not exceed forty thousand dollars in the utility fund.
Okay, so I'm not necessarily opposed to any of that. I am a little concerned that we knew he was going to retire for several months.
Yes.
And these contingency plans and retirement plans were not put into place. Like institutional knowledge, I understand the importance of it. We just had someone in my division who's been with the city for thirty years.
Right.
Tons of institutional knowledge, tons of historical knowledge that a lot of us don't have. However, we were given two weeks' notice that she was retiring, and we still were able to develop a contingency plan or write down and collect her notes and gather all of that. It's not as, it's not as organized as we would probably like it, but if, had we been given months, we would have had something in place. And so I, I'm, that raises a couple of flags for me that I feel like we probably should have been better prepared for retirement that we knew was coming. Again, I don't mind that he's representing us on those boards, especially since that public works position has not been filled yet, but I do want to make sure that we're not just dependent on people because they were with the city for a while and they have this knowledge that we actually, while, under this consultant fee, that maybe we're continuing that plan, or whatever he has, getting that institutional knowledge out of his head and written down for whoever comes in. They can't, I'm sure he wants to actually enjoy his retirement at some point. His wife's going to make him go on vacation or something, and we can't just depend on being able to call people all the time. We have to get that as much as we can written down and then kind of be on our own and figure it out. So I'm, I am a little concerned about that.
What I'd like to express is that, to the greatest degree possible with Mr. Fuess's retirement, he passed along current status of projects and initiatives. What a person cannot pass along, just like I cannot when I've left previous organizations, is my expertise and knowledge on subject matters that in my full-time position, I was responsible for representing the city. Everything that I read here is Mr. Fuess using that knowledge and expertise to the benefit of our city. That's what this is about. It's not a lack of planning on his exit. I can't tell you how few people understand the TCEQ requirement like Mr. Fuess in the state of Texas. When we consult with GVEC, they're like, how is that calculated? Mr. Fuess will explain how that TCEQ requirement is calculated and how much water you have to have in reserve just to meet that requirement. And if you don't, TCEQ can come and issue fines until you have that requirement. So I want to characterize his knowledge and expertise that we would use as that expertise that walks out the door anytime somebody of his years of experience, his years of knowledge leave. It's not a lack of planning on his way out. If we don't use a consultant like a Mr. Fuess, we will spend more hours reviewing every impact fee study from the past to ensure that we're not overlooking something in this one across two different impact fee studies. Mr. Fuess understands the available water resources in our region that are pivotal to us acquiring water rights for the next twenty years or beyond. That's not knowledge that you leave in the workplace. And so I tell counsel, the money that we would pay Mr. Fuess in a consulting agreement is money we will save because of using his knowledge and expertise. It's not money out the door, it's money that we're saving. One example is that he's worked, he had worked with CRWA before he left to find the potential of a no-cost TCEQ water reserve requirement. That's just because of his knowledge and expertise versus, counsel will remember, there was an option that was one point eight million dollars annually that you repeated every single year. And so the ability to find a short-term no cost until we figure that out was just because of his knowledge and expertise. So using his knowledge and expertise is money saved, not money spent. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions and get a motion on this?
How long is the duration of the contract for this, his consulting?
This would be a one-year contract. It would not exceed, did we say forty thousand? Yeah.
Forty thousand in this fiscal year, I believe the contract was for fifty, forty-nine.
Well, so forty thousand in this fiscal year, it would be a one-year contract. So every year, it's appropriations, right? So you have to appropriate money for that consultant.
I'll make a motion to approve today.
Do I have a second? Second, my counsel.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Bonnie, yes, ma'am.
Motion passed six-one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. Ten B, approval, disapproval of ordinance to repeal and replace Siblo Code of Ordinances, Chapter fourteen, Article four, Substandard Building Regulations. Mr. Reed. Mr. Reed.
Next slide. The purpose of this ordinance is to provide clarification, is to provide the following. A, clarification of the process for substandard structures. Under our current regulations, that process is less than clear, less than precise. It's to clarify, B, clarify which body will hear judicial enforcement matters regarding substandard structures. And that would be the municipal court. I'll comment later on that counsel reserves the right to be the judicial body on any substandard structure proceeding. C, it's to clarify what buildings and structures are subject to these regulations. That includes substandard buildings and structures, unsecured buildings or structures, and dangerous buildings or structures. The ordinance sets offenses and penalties, such as maintaining a nuisance, failure to comply with municipal court order, and setting the penalties. So on this slide right here is a very high level of the revisions and updates that have been worked on between our code enforcement staff with our current director in just the last month getting up to speed, and then with our city attorney's office. And what I said just a second ago covers everything that's on this slide. And Mr. Hyde can speak to the difference between Chapter 214 and Chapter 54 from the Texas Local Government Code. If counsel has any questions, but pulling from both of those chapters gives us a more robust regulatory framework around those substandard structures that I just mentioned. And in our community, the question is, well, why are we upgrading our substandard structures ordinance and processes and definitions and penalties? It's because we have come across a couple of properties that have not responded to our requests to clean the property up and to remedy the nuisance.
Would that include the one on Haverhill Road?
Yes, sir. And I'm not mentioning any specific property, but yes, sir, that is one.
Okay.
That violation after violation being filed, we have no teeth, per se, in the enforcement, and so we are ignored. This ordinance will fix that. With a public proceeding where there's a public hearing required, notices sent to the property so that it's a very fair process to the property owner. In the ordinance, I want to identify the multiple-step process that occurs for any particular case.
And city council, just as an example of the type of institutional processes we're trying to assist your co-compliance with. If you'd like a copy, you can, but what we've done is created a current unoccupied substandard structure proceedings checklist. And in the checklist, it provides a step-by-step process for code compliance to be able to go through the entire process of creating a complaint, getting the affidavit completed, the manner in which you can give the notice of hearing for a substandard structures hearing, the notices to property owner, the ordinance that has to be filed for purposes of a nuisance, the secondary process with regards to the, the fire marshals, notice of not, a notice of no entrance, you know, that entrance is prohibited. We've done all of those things to put together so that the next time you have a substra, a substandard structure, all we have to do is review the work of your staff instead of having to expend the legal time and re-preparing documents over and over again. I always say that, you know, the old adage, you know, you give a man a fish, they eat for a day. If you teach him to fish, they eat for a lifetime. We're trying to teach co-compliance to fish.
So you're saying, any coming forth, what about the one, the couple that we know of right now?
Those will be the first two that this ordinance will be applied to.
All right.
And the process will start from step one, using this ordinance.
Moving forward, okay.
We also intend to bring to the council certain matters so that you are aware of the items that we're going to be enforcing so that there are no surprises to the council with regards to action that's taken based on the condition of properties.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve 10B.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, pro-temin, counsel.
You have a question? Well, ask it. We haven't voted yet. You, until we take a vote.
You can still have discussion before the vote.
You can have conversation until the vote is taken.
I do have a question regarding the foundation on this. As we start carrying this ordinance forward regarding the funding and any power of letting out the home and so forth.
Yes.
So it says additional funding will be added to.
Code enforcement sections budget to engage contractor to perform demolition. That's our main power.
Yes.
Clearing removal of waste. When project completed, a lien will be filed to ensure reimbursement of costs when property is transferred to a private property. Where is the additional funding going to come from? I realize that the code enforcement falls under planning, which is in our non-departmental fund on the budget.
Ms. Sanchez-Stevens, in the budget amendment number one that you just passed, Ms. Anna Miranda read one of the general fund amendments, and that was code enforcement and $30,000 to its budget. Now, $30,000 is a swag, as people like to say. There could be a property that eats up 10K of that $30,000 and the next two are only a $3,000 or $4,000 hit. If we don't need to abate property up to 30K, we're not spending that money. So we took a swag at, given some current properties that we will need to work on and there is significant work associated with that. We were confident that 30K should cover what we know is in our future.
Okay. And that just rolled over from 2024 to 2025?
No, you just amended the FY25 budget to add that to code enforcement. Brand-new cost. We have not in the past put abatement dollars in code enforcement. It's very customary with other cities to have abatement dollars in the base budget. And going forward, we would be including that for code enforcement in future annual budgets.
Will those costs be able to be put back to the property owner?
So it's not always the case, but the usual is that these property owners are not willing to pay the city back immediately. So we put a lien on the properties. The city recovers that when the property is sold. The title company is obligated through that lien to cut a check to the city of Siblo, and that's when we get the money. So that could be one year after the abatement. It could be 10 years.
Someday, they're gonna wanna sell it.
Yes.
Typically, what we, what you find is that these properties are not being kept. And so there may be a owner that may be deceased and family is not paying attention. Those kind of things happen, and so they will want to sell the property as quickly as possible because it's now a liability. And so that's why the lien is used typically because if they don't have the money to be able to fix it, at least the sale of the property will recover our funds necessary to clean it up.
Okay. Are we good to go ahead and vote? All right. Motion passed, six, oh. Thank you for staying. I know it had to get to the end, but hopefully we can move forward and help you. It's a minimal amount of time to what y'all have gone through, I know. Thank you so much. All right. Moving on to 11, executive session. City council will meet in the executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551-071, consultation with the attorney to discuss the following. Tolly Road Acquisition. Time is 22:50.
10:50.
We're exiting executive session. Council's back in session 23, 29 hours. No motions needed? Okay. All right. And I guess that's all we need. I just need to...
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.